Hello, good morning.
Morning. I'm Phil Pierce from Conan Wolf.
Morning.
Thanks for joining us. We've got the full board here. We've got Sean Britell, who's Chair of the Board. He'll be back in just a second. I'm Regina Penn, and we've also got Lori Fernand. We've got about 12 minutes for each person, so I'm going to jump in and give you the oath, and then we can, we'll be looking for you to walk us through the basis of the appeal.
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Great.
So, I'm Phil Pierce from Conan Wolf. This appeal is for 86 Hop Meadow Street. As you know, there's a 10-1-17 revaluation. The major tenant of this space was Sedexo, and their lease expired in February of 2018, so shortly after the revaluation. It was known prior to the revaluation that the tenant was not renewing the lease, so it was known that it was going to expire. Therefore, you know, had the property traded on 10-1-17, obviously, that lease would not have been factored into the purchase price. Basically, would have been purchased largely vacant. That property, that portion of the property is still vacant, I believe. I did check online. It's still marketed even today. So, you know, it's been a couple of years, and that portion of it is still vacant. If you look at the net operating income from 2018 and 2019, in 2018, it was about $213,000. In 2019, it was $145,000. I believe the town is using a loaded cap rate of 11.5. So, you know, based on that NOI, I mean, that value would easily be less than 2 million. For 2018, it'd be $1,008,000 and change. For 2019, it'd be $1,002,000 and change. Now, obviously, some value should be ascribed to that vacant space, but not what we're trying to rent it for, obviously, since it has not rented. So, our request for a reduction is 2 million. I believe the town's value is currently about 3 million. But given the vacancy issue, 2 million seems like the right number. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you ascribe the 999, 999,000? So, the town is almost 3 million. It's 2,999,999. Do you ascribe the rest of that to the difference between, to that one, that first floor and your inability to rent that? All of that is reflected in that number? And that's why you're asking for 2 million versus the 2.9?
I think, I think so. I mean, I, you know, I think that that can be, that's probably the only reason for the major disparity. I mean, let me, the, I mean, Sedexo was paying, when they moved out, they were paying, their rental rate was $415,000 a year annually. So, it was a major tenant for the space. So, I, you know, we've not been able to match that rent in any respect, and it's still vacant. So, and, you know, at, at the time, that, you know, I mean, it's proven now that that space is not going to be, is not rented, right? So, I mean, it's been a few years now, but at the time, it was known that this tenant was moving out, and there was no new tenant for the space.
Okay. I think that's the only question I have.
Regina, any questions from you?
So, we've got some of the background about the discussions that happened around the assessment time, where it looks like there was some conversation about that, you know, that the major tenant wasn't going to be continuing, and an attempt to take that into account. Can you walk me through what changed since, you know, that conversation happened with the assessors and the conversation we're having now? It looks like that, you know, that original thing wasn't a formal appeal, so it's not a question of, you're here, things changed, but can you, can you walk me through what changed from, from that to now?
Yes, so, let me just pull up the email. Okay, so, so you're right, that that did not involve an appeal, so it's not as if any of that discussion is in any way perclusive on our rights to be before the board today, because the board's never acted on it, never made a reduction. The, even that indicated that he was willing to take a year-by-year approach to value. I think perhaps it was overly optimistic that, you know, that there might be a tenant coming. Obviously, he was wrong. But in any event, it was, the suggestion was to take it year by year, not to set something for the rest of the revaluation period. And, you know, I mean, the email that I've seen from Brian Mulready, who's an appraiser, it suggests to me that, you know, the, if there was any understanding, it was an understanding that the value would, would be adjusted based on the income and expenses from year to year, if this value was agreed upon for that first year of the revaluation. Now, we are not appealing that first year. Obviously, we can't do that. This is a two-year appeal. But I think, you know, maybe it was a little optimistic to think that it would, you know, that the net income would not decrease. I mean, as I indicated, it did decrease in 2019, on the 2019, I know, income and expense. The 2020, which has not yet been filed, but, you know, will be shortly, I expect will show something similar to 2019. So, I think, you know, to the extent there was any understanding, was an understanding that the value would be adjusted year to year based on income and expense, which is, which is not typically how it would work, obviously. But that was, I mean, that is what the email says. And the, and the income did start higher. I mean, I don't know what it was for 2017, but for 2017, obviously, the IME would reflect the Sedexo rent for the entire year.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that that's how, had the property traded, it would have been valued. The lease would have been ignored by anybody vowing the property, because it was expiring. And if somebody has an above-market lease that's expiring, you're not going to have the property trade based on that information.
Okay. I think that's all my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are you all set on your end?
I am. I should say, we definitely hope you get that space rented out.
So do, so does my client. Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay, Phil, we will meet and discuss, and then we'll let your client know the final outcome via the mail.
Great.
He's been before us, so.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Excuse me. Just going to adjust my chair.
When you guys are ready, I'll let our 11:30 in. He came in early. It's John Corey for 27 Lawton Drive. On the new agenda.
One second.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, I'm all set when you guys are.
Yep.
Lori?
I'm all set.
Mr. Corey.
Hello, good morning.
Hi.
Morning.
Nice to meet you guys. John Corey here.
Hi, thanks for joining us. We've got the full board here. We've got Sean Britell, who's Chair of the Board. I'm Regina Penn. We've got Lori Fernand. We've got about 12 minutes to hear each person today, so I'm going to give you a quick oath, and then if you can jump in and walk us through what we've got for the appeal.
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Great. All right, floor is yours.
Okay, John, why don't you walk us through your property on Lawton?
Sure. So, we bought the home in September, okay, for $502,000. And then we got hit with the tax adjustment with an appraised value of 568, which I understand it goes back three years. I get that. But, you know, my argument is, you know, we just paid, with all the improvements that were done in the home three years back, actually, more than that, we're factoring into the purchase price, right? So, today, you know, we were in the hottest real estate market in decades, right, if not more than that. And quite frankly, it feels like we didn't have much competition to buy a home, which means there's no way it was worth 568,000 today. And I get that, that we're talking about three years back. So, my argument is, it seems like when they did the improvements on the old home, or the old owners did improvements, and I think it was 2014, 2015, and they filed, I'm assuming, again, we didn't own the home, I'm just hearing this actually through some of the Board of Assessment members, or the people in the office who told me about this, that apparently there's a mix-up within the town, within the organization, that did not, I don't know if they didn't tell everybody about what was going on, or if it wasn't, you know, recorded appropriately, but it seems like the old owners got away with lower taxes for about five or six years, which I understand from the town's perspective, you got to bring everything back up to where it should be, but it feels like we're paying for an increase in taxes for what should have been paid five, six years ago. So, my argument is, we paid, with all the improvements they've done to the home, I still don't understand how 568 is the number that the town is arriving at. I don't, I don't get that, because if we're looking at the appraisal that I included, that's going off direct comparables, 515,000. We paid 502 for it. So, again, it's way below what 568,000 for the appraised value of the home that we're talking about. I just don't understand that. So, I don't know, do you guys have the information that backs up the number that the town is using? Because I have not seen that, and I'm not too familiar with how that works.
I'm looking on the card. We have a kitchen renovation that was done, a shed that was added, a pool removed, and then a garage and mudroom and room addition added, all in 2020? I'm sorry, the kitchen wasn't?
No, so all of that was done in 2014. So, the whole issue was?
But it was not added on, it was not, it was probably closed out? So, right, I think, maybe? And that's why it wasn't added on to the?
That's right. So, so I feel like we bought the home, assuming that everything was correct, and then here we are, needing to do tax increases. We wouldn't have paid 502 with their higher taxes. I understand what you're saying with that, so our pitch was, all right, we believe with all those improvements that were done, we paid 502,000 for the house. If the taxes were where they should have been, we would have paid less, because, you know, it's affordability, right? I mean, we would have been paying X amount more a month. We wouldn't have wanted to pay that much more money for the home. So, I guess my argument is, it sounded like there was a mix-up where it should have been updated five years ago, but it never was. So, that, to me, that's, you know, I'm not trying to shift the blame, but that's not my issue. It feels like there's a mix-up within the town that when they got the permits for those improvements, for the addition, for the shed, for all this, they just, they didn't just do that, they pulled permits for it. And to me, there was a mistake back when that happened, that it never got probably recorded appropriately, maybe, I think somebody said it was maybe some understaffing issues. I get that, but now it feels like we're paying for, for the mistake of the town and of the previous owners, you know? And that's, that's just my argument. Like, I understand.
I understand.
You can't look at the value today, I get that, but it just feels like, it, it feels like a raw end of a deal, you know, that's my angle.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from, you know, unfortunately, it's the property owner's job to close out the permit, not necessarily the town to come and say, hey, you know, are you done with this yet?
Fair enough, fair enough. So.
We can't be policing everybody to come and close their permits.
Okay, so.
Obviously, some people don't want to close them, because this is what happens when it, when it does finally get closed, so.
I get that, I get that.
I understand your frustration. And Lori or Regina, do you guys have any questions for Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I think the most useful thing to do with the time we've got left is maybe to focus a little more on, on, you know, the current basis for the, the, the town's assessed amount, and if there's things, if, if we can, just kind of ignore how we got there, you know, are there things about the current assessment that seem like they're erroneous, or, or, you know, kind of putting blinders on with the property we've got, that we can kind of walk through those?
Then, then that's what I'm trying to do. So, 500, as simple as this, 568,000 appraised value for the home, we have an appraisal of something for 515,000. That's a huge gap. And I just don't understand how, I, I don't, I don't understand how there can be that much of a gap in value. So, I, I don't know how, when they, when the town reassessed, I don't know how they reached that number.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Was the appraisal, an appraisal for, for like the sale for the mortgage, or was it retroactive to 2017?
It was for the mortgage.
The mortgage, okay.
So, again, I think, I think that's pretty clear of my argument. I mean, it's just, I, I don't know how the 568 came about. You know, I don't know how they calculate, you know, additions on a home. Did they depreciate? I mean, the home was five, six years old, you know, when they, when they did the addition, did they count the depreciation? I have not seen a report that, that validates the 568.
I just want to reconfirm, the improvements that are listed now on the real estate, the property card, happened, they didn't happen in 2020. That's when we became aware of them. Okay, all right, sorry, I thought it was a little off.
I'm sorry, yeah. So, so, again, we just moved in in September. I'm sorry, Sean, right? Okay, so we, so we moved in in September, right? So, we, we were not aware of the taxes. Again, that's not the problem. I, we're the owner. I get it, we're the owner. My problem is, again, arriving at the 568,000, where we're showing an appraisal of 515,000, and we paid 502. So, that's a big difference, and that's what I'm trying to drive out, what's supporting that 568.
Right. I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to say, you know, welcome to town, and our goal as?
I've been here, yeah, we've been.
Oh, okay, well.
Since 2008.
Well, our goal is to be as fair as possible to everyone, so we will, will take a, a deep look at this in our deliberations and, and see where the, our number came from, and then make a decision. But we, we, our, our goal is to be fair, so everyone's paying equitably.
Of course, and I, and that's, that's why I at least want to present that case. And I understand it's retroactive to 2017, so my argument would be, okay, well, let's just say we can't come to an agreement on, you know, the assessed value, well, in three years, I have an appraisal that I can show what the home is worth, and not to mention we paid 502 for it. So, my expectation would be that, okay, in three years, we're going to do this again, and I just don't see how the argument can be made that our taxes shouldn't come down. So, I'm just trying to, you know, state my case, that's all.
I have a, I have a question, and I think this is probably directed at the, the town staff we've got on. I'm looking at the, the card, and on the first page of the card, I see a note, 2020 removed Ingram pool and 2002, 200 square foot porch. I come to the, the reverse side, and under the, the outbuilding section, I do see open porch with, with 220 square foot. Can we confirm that we don't have that, that, the, the item that was listed as removed on the first page still there on the second, and that's a separate porch that's still there?
All right, let me pull it up and see. This is Francine.
Thanks, Francine.
Yeah, again, this is all stuff that was done, I mean, till the pool, and that was seven years ago.
Or?
Now, I, again, I, so I can't speak to what they did, how they did it, and all that. We just bought the home in September, as is.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So, what we've got here is the, the basis for, you know, the question is, how did the town come up with, with the assessment? A big chunk of it is, is this information, which hopefully you've seen as part of this process, which is the best information the town has about what the condition of the property is. So, things like, you know, what's the overall condition? Is it a brand-new thing, or is it falling apart? You know, you're listed here as, you know, average to good, which, you know, is, is where a lot of the houses will come in. So, there's also a section that lists any, any outbuildings. So, if there was a pool, it would still be there. There was like a big shed. So, I was just trying to see if there was maybe anything hanging out on there that had been removed, but not removed from the card.
Yeah, I'm just going to.
All right, so yes, the pool was removed, and then that porch that was year-built of 2002 was also removed.
Okay.
And if you look at the property card on page two, it lists all the detached components and year-bills, and as, any porches that are attached are described under attached components with the year-built. So, you can look at that and, and see that it is not included anymore.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for me? Can our, let me, I know I don't want to talk in circles, it's pretty straightforward.
I don't think I've got any more questions.
Okay, thank you for coming before us, and we will deliberate and get something to you in the mail, all right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice talk. We do have some time here right now between, since he came in early, our next scheduled appellant is not until 11:45. If you want to use that time for whatever.
Okay.
Viewing the minutes or deliberating on something at this point, and if not, that's up to you guys, just letting you know the timing. And I'll let you know when the next one rolls in.
Okay. Well.
What do you guys want to do?
Get it all done. So, I think, yeah, minutes are easy, so we could do that, and then it makes sense if we could look at the two appellate so far, if we have enough time.
Try and stay on top of it as much as we can here.
Yeah.
I'm going to review the minutes real quickly. There was something that I saw on there that I, but let me, let me get back to you.
I'm just taking a look at the minutes now. I thought, did we have a couple of corrections that we needed to make?
Thought that was in my phone, some of the emails.
I believe someone made it.
Corrections I noted with Lori. Francine's taking a peek right now. She thought she saw something.
And me spelling your name incorrectly, Sean, apologies.
What's that?
I spelled your name with one L throughout the document, so I'll get it right this time.
Just for clarification on the card, where you were seeing 2020?
Yes.
That's a notation for the 2020 grand list, which is saying that's when we're working on it.
Oh, oh, not the year it was necessarily put off. It's all grand list years. Gotcha.
Exactly, and we're not going back to 2017 and adding, you know, making corrections.
Sure.
This is, this was discovered, added for the 2020 grand list.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So, I mean, you know, I, the funny thing is, generally, the appraisal is a really helpful tool. Ironically, in practical practice today, properties are selling for 20,000 to 30,000 over appraisal, so it used to be a really good tool. Now, it's not so much.
You know what confuses me about this one? Because it was September, right? So, I'm sorry, we're on Lawton, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yeah.
So, just the sale price, right, was the 502, fine. Hot market, you know, I saw it sat for 72 days, which, a little weird for right now, but fine. I, I would have expected that when you look back to 2017, anything selling today is going to go like, in, in like actual dollars exchanged, is going to be more than what the assessed value would have been, appraised value would have been in 2017, you know? So, that's the one piece of this, and Sean, with, you know, this, this being actually your area of expertise, any thoughts on what's driving that? That's the one piece of this I can't wrap my head around, because the people buying the house would have seen all of the, all of the additions. I assume that would be priced into it.
Unless there was some hardship or anything like that, that's, I'll just put that in, unless there's a hardship in the sale, you know, an unwilling buyer, not an arms-length transaction, so we do have to review that. Some of those will be less than what the actual.
There was a note on the appraisal he submitted saying it was arms-length and 17 pages, and they've reviewed it.
Yeah, my comment was for all and all, you know?
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, with the Lawton Drive address, Regina, what you were saying is that it's sold, it's, was appraised more than 2017, because, because the way, I guess, instead of going back to what you were asking, Regina, I'm looking at that they did get the appraisal of 502, and granted, it was, and like you're saying, Sean, appraisals now aren't as helpful, but they had it on the market for 537, and I'm wondering, to me, I was thinking, maybe we could come to a balance with an understanding that the market is hot now and has changed, but we are looking at what it was valued
Right.
last year, and?
I mean, you know, honestly, I mean, I'm looking at the property online. It's, you know, I see it's a big house, but I mean, you got one-car garage, and it's 568,000? I mean, that's just my, that's a lot.
So, I was thinking if we use their 530?
Sorry, wait a second. It, the, the car has a two-bay garage.
The other one is like a clodder farm, like portable.
Oh, okay.
That's what it looks like here in the.
Yeah, the one that's attached to the, that's in the house is a two-bay.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, it's two bays attached to the house, and then a clodder farm, you know, a standalone structure that, whatever they're doing with it?
How weird. It's like under the house. I stand, I take that comment back.
There are, towards the back of your packet, there's some sketches that were done by the inspector when he went out.
So, their sale was right around the time that we're trying to price it, right?
Mm-hmm.
September of 2020?
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the, with the appraised price of 502.
Appraised price was 515, the appraisal.
The appraisal was 515?
It looked like it said 52, but he said 515.
The contract price is 502.
Yeah.
The appraisal that he had done for the bank is 515. The prior value, full value that we had, prior to any changes, was 518,860.
Say that number again.
518,860, before we added the additions.
And again, in the back of your packet, in the assessor package, there's a card that says "before" written on it. That was before any changes occurred.
We said the appraisal value lines up with what the town was praising at before we knew about these additions. Ignoring the fact that we're talking about two different years, because, but again, 2020, I assume, is going to be hotter than a 2017 actual number would have been.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the 515.
I would be too, because come 2020, become, you know, the next revow, you know, will so, and I think it is a big hit. Okay, yeah. Alright, so should I make a motion? I, I don't know if Regina, if you have more discussion? So we'd be making it which value? I feel like it, so we're actually bringing it to a lower town value than what the town had it before these additions we knew. That, like if we want to keep it the same because we think things are just too confusing, fine, but that's actually lowering the, the town value of the property and I, I don't, I can't follow the logic on that one.
Well, it just sold for 502 and we're giving it a 515 value, so.
Well, Regina, are you saying to go for the, with the 518-860? Because I think that's a, just a nominal amount more and that's what the town had it assessed at before the discovery of the, the additions. I can wrap my head around that more than, I just, we now know that there's things on the property that weren't there before. A sale in 2020 shouldn't be changing an assessment value from 2017, I'm not seeing a reason to go below what the town had it assessed after 2017. Just, just kind of where my head, agreed, it's a nominal value difference, but you, you guys know me, I need things to kind of make, make sense in my head. So that would be, that would be my put is the, the, the 518, was it 518-86 was what it was previously?
Five eighteen eight sixty.
So.
With that, if you want to go there?
Okay. That's a reduction of fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Regina, you want to motion that?
Sure, motion to, okay, wait. The appraised value, right? Making the market, I'm gonna say the market value number, so that's the appraised, not the assessed.
Exactly.
A motion to adjust the appraised value for twenty-seven Lawton Drive, unique, I, do you want me to, unique IDs?
That's okay.
Okay, to adjust that to five one eight eight six zero.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we still have time to do?
We, we have our eleven forty-five, came in early, Mr. It, Mr. And Mrs. Israel, I'm not sure if they're both on. I'll give you a second to finish up your paperwork. Let me know when you're ready.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
This is for four thirty-seven Bushy Hill Road.
Good morning. Morning.
Good morning.
Hi, thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
We've got the full, um, who do we have on the, on the call here? Are you, um, Arthur?
I'm, I'm Robert with Maria, Maria is not here yet, but she's coming, Herrera, ten cocktail way.
Okay.
Oh, our news, our new hearing.
He's our, our new meeting, his early, yes, my mistake.
Okay, as long as we don't have the eleven forty
They just showed up, so. If you want to.
Apologies, Mr. Herrera, we're, we're trying to take folks in, in the order they are on the agenda, so we're gonna, we're gonna go do our, our eleven forty-five hearing and then we'll be right back with you.
Thank you, I think minus double clock, is that right?
Yes, so hopefully, hopefully we'll get to you before that, but just hang on and we'll be back in a few.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, here comes Mr. Israel.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Israel, can you hear us? Hi, Mr. Israel, could you hear us? Can I see?
Are you there?
Oh, connecting to audio, here we go. Good morning, Mr. Israel.
Can you hear us now?
Morning.
Morning.
I'm in the right place, huh?
Board of Assessment Appeals, yep, is this Mr. Israel?
Yes, yes.
Hi, good morning, we've got, we've got the full board here, we've got Sean, Sean Britell, our chair, I'm Regina Pin and we also have Lori Fernand. We've got, we've got about twelve minutes to go through the case, so I'm gonna start with a quick oath and then the floor is yours after that to walk us through what we've got for the basis of the appeal.
Alright.
Okay, do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm as the case may be that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Great. Is that, is that, um, is that Susan in the background there? Just so we can make note of who we're, we're talking to here.
I'm here.
Yes, it is.
Do you, do you, do you also agree to that oath?
Sure, why not?
Yeah.
So do you want to?
I'm not gonna say anything, I'm just here for moral support.
Moral support.
Moral support.
So what have we got?
Well, you, you should have a, a packet that I sent in.
Yes, we do.
The application and there's several documents that show comparable properties.
Yes, and looks like there's an appraisal that was done in done in last April also?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct and then it just goes into the specifics of the Bushy Hill property. This, the sales price or the, what we purchased it was for two hundred and sixty-five thousand. It goes into specifics, I mean, this is all your, your documentation from the town. And then we have some comparables. There's a three sixty-eight Bushy Hill Road, twenty-four Mr. Druke Drive, thirty-nine Barn, Banks Road and twenty-nine Wyndham Drive. And beyond that, we have the parcel information from the, from the assessor's office, the appraised value on the four thirty-seven Bushy Hill being three hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-nine, which I feel is excessive compared to these other properties. And we'll, we'll try to go through and indicate some of the similarities and, and the assessed values for these other properties. So if you go through the pages here, you can see the let me get my the living area for, for the four thirty-seven Bushy Hill, twenty-four sixty-nine, eleven rooms. You know, basement area and so on and attached components, detached buildings, there is a shed on the property. I had some trouble with the idea that there were two different porches on the property. I mean, to me, a porch is something that you can put a, a lawn chair and sit down and maybe have a gin and tonic or something like that. But they indicate an enclosed porch and an open porch and by definition, I guess, an open porch would be what's what's on the, over the front entrance? There is a, a cover over the steps in the front entrance, I assume that's what you mean by a porch? Is that correct?
Yeah, thirty-six square feet, must be.
Well, that's, no, the, the open porch, I, I assume would be the front entrance way where there is a cover over the steps. And then there's a, an, another rear entrance that is covered and it's basically covered, uh, uh, steps leading into the, in the basement. Now, if that's, that's considered a porch, I, I, I'm, I'm I'm baffled, but I guess that's what's indicated here. Do you agree that the, these are considered porches? I mean, how do you define a porch?
Hey, I'm, I'm looking at a picture of it, I mean, what, what would you consider it's, it's a, some, it's a structure, right? It's covered.
There's, there's a, there's a cover over the front entrance, there's like a little roof over the front steps. Is that what you consider a porch?
Alright, this is Francine, would you like me to chime in?
Yes, please.
Okay, the way, this is the assessor, so in our system, when we consider, when we say an OP, which is an open porch, it's an area that has a roof, no sides, okay? So let's take for example a deck. When we say a deck, okay, there is no cover above, there's no roof. An enclosed porch would be a cover and walls, so either all glass walls or, you know, and then we have screen porch, those would be, the walls would be screened in areas, so that's what we define.
You know, a general definition would be that it's someplace where you could maybe put down a table, a chair, you know, I mean, that's what I consider, I grew up where there was a, a back porch and we could go out and sit there and so on.
Well, our per square footage rates would be pretty much the same thing, so as long as it's covered, it's enclosed, that's what, you know, our system, all the same components would be addressed the same way, would be labeled the same way.
There's no, there's no minimum square footage for it to be considered a
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah. Okay, alright, well, that's, that's how you define a porch, I guess, there's a porch. So let's, let's go on. I want to compare some of these other properties. The, there's the twenty-four Minister Brook.
I, I saw that and, and thinks it's so helpful when folks point us in the direction of, of, of comparables, it really helps, you know, clarify things. And I know Bushy Hill is, is, is a busy road, so there's that piece of it. I did notice that of the two properties you, you directed us to, there's a lot more bedrooms in the property we're talking about than either of the comparables, so I was wondering if you could walk us through how, how that's playing into choosing these as, as comparables?
Yeah, okay, well, there is, according to your assessment, there are three bedrooms, I believe, let's see. Six bedrooms, six bedrooms. Now, if you were looking at twenty-four Minister Brook, here there are four bedrooms, nine rooms total. The living area is about the same as, as four thirty-seven Bushy Hill. There are similar features, skylights and chimneys and so on and the attached components, I don't know why there are, there are two wood, wood decks here, different different areas, but there are two wood, wood decks, the garage, the patio, open porch. So similar, similar to attached components. The, the assessed value here is three hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and twenty, which was about three point six percent less than the four thirty-seven Bushy Hill. So we're paying three point six percent less in the assessed value or the taxes compared to four thirty-seven Bushy Hill. There's a recent sale, four fifty-five Bushy Hill Road. It was in the newspaper on March nineteenth, it was sold for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, I think it was kind of a I don't know, from a HUD, USA HUD to some, it was kind of a the house was flipped, I guess, which we can stay. Here the, the assessed value, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred, which would be five and a half percent less than the four thirty-seven. And as far as let's see, bedrooms here, there are five bedrooms versus six for the four thirty-seven. The living area is greater for the four fifty-five Bushy Hill.
Mr. Israel, I, I apologize for interrupting, we've got about a minute left, so just wanted to make sure, any final points or, or questions from the board we had time for?
Say again?
Yeah, and, and let me just say this quickly, Mr. Israel, the appraisal is gonna help us definitely dig into these numbers that you're, you're pointing out to us.
Yeah.
And once we do, we will make a decision and mail something out to you.
I see.
You have any other questions for us?
Alright, well, I, I'm looking for at least a five percent reduction in the assessed value or as far as the taxes go, alright, that, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
That's it?
Alright, you enjoy the rest of your day, sir, and, and we will let you know.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, well, one, one point I'd like to make is according to the assess value, assessment report, there's six bedrooms, we believe there's five bedrooms.
Is the other
Including the, the basement, there's a basement that
Oh, I gotcha.
And, and one other thing, one, one other thing, if I could have a moment, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there was a a study done, I don't know if you could see this.
Can't see.
Chicago did a study and basically their conclusion was property tax burdens fall on the nation's lowest income homeowners. Uh, a system-wide, a system nationwide study by a, uh, uh, Chicago political scientist finds that lower income residents pay more subsidizing the homes of the wealthy. I, I, uh, point your attention to that, uh, study by the University of Chicago, uh, Harris Public Policy Institute.
Okay, thank you for that, too.
This is Sean, Sean, this is Francine, the assessor. Um, you, uh, getting back to your bedroom count, sir.
Yeah.
You, you agree that there is a bedroom, you know, in the lower level?
Yes.
And is there a bedroom on the first floor?
No. No bedroom.
Do you, all right, so you have, uh, the kitchen, dining room, a living room, a family room? Is there another room that's not being utilized as a bedroom that has a closet, a door?
On the first floor or?
Yes, do you, no, on the first floor, is there a room that's being used as an office that has a closet, a door, a window that could be considered a bedroom?
No.
May, no? Okay, and then on the second floor, you have four bedrooms?
How many?
Yeah, one, two, three, four.
Four bedrooms, yes.
Okay, so the first floor, you only have a kitchen, dining room, living room, a family room? No other open, no other rooms have been walls torn down to make a bigger room or living room or anything like that for open floor plan?
No.
Changes?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Bye.
Uh, how do we get out of here?
Mr. Herrera is patiently waiting.
You can, yeah.
You guys are.
You guys ready? Are you, give me a minute, you want a minute?
Yep, let's go.
I think we're ready.
Hi, Mr. Herrera.
Hello, hi, welcome back, thank you.
Thanks so much for waiting, thanks for waiting. We've got the full board here, we've got Sean Britell, who's the chair. I'm Regina Pin, and we've also got Lori Fernand.
Okay.
We've got about 12 minutes per hearing. Hello there, hi, Mr. Herrera. Um, we've got about 12 minutes per hearing, so, uh, I'm going to give you both an oath. Just have to, you know, agree to the oath. And then if you could just walk us through, um, the appeal and what we've got in front of us, okay?
Sure, yes, thanks.
Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do, we do.
We do.
Great.
Thanks.
Floor is yours.
Pardon?
Uh, come again?
Go ahead, if you could just walk, start walking us through.
Oh, so, um, yeah, we have Van Copdale Way and I submitted three comparables. Uh, number 11, number 20, and number 22. So I highlighted that they are, the square footage of those houses, we, we were friends with the previous owners of those houses, so we've been into the houses. Uh, they have new owners now, but, um, so the square footages of all the three are bigger than ours. They are ab- about the same quality as ours, because we have the same houses here in, uh, our street. And so, um, two of them have finished basements. I think two, right? And so, uh, yeah, I, I think they've been through, um, uh, they went to hearings before, but we were not, um, we, I guess we were just intimidated to go. So we did not join with them with the first hearings and, and so I, their, um, assessments were lowered finally, and ours got lagged behind. We, uh, yeah, and so, um, uh, with the times, I guess we want to, um, get our true assessment right now. If, if, you know, with your consideration.
Um, thank you for submitting the, the comparables. I know, um, those properties upon Cobtail, um, took a, a significant hit, um, in value over the last few years and.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you well, sorry.
All right, sure, thank you for coming, um, before us. And I know that the, the properties on that street have taken, um, a hit in value in recent years as we've had others come before us as well, so, um, I don't have any questions, Lori or Regina, do you have any questions for the Herrera's?
I, I don't have any questions and, and thanks, and please never hesitate in the future to come before us, so, you know.
Thank you.
We're your neighbors, uh, you know, on this board here, so, um, we, we are doing this because, you know, we want to be able to have everyone feel that they're heard and they get an opportunity to participate, so, so thanks for joining us today, but I have no questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, same, I, I love it when folks come with all of the info written down, because that, that, that's why I have no questions, it's like, oh, I'll just go, just go through the numbers. And as, as Sean said, you know, we've, we've had folks, um, you know, from the Cobtail area, so we, we've looked at these homes a few times, so thanks for, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, and we will, uh, notify you in the mail of, once the, uh, the board makes a decision, all right?
Thank you so much.
That's it, right, for now?
Thank you, thank you for time.
For your time.
Thank you, have a good one.
You too, thanks.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Our 12:30 appellant is here early.
Awesome.
Um, and our next scheduled one isn't until 12:15, so when Sean gets back, if you want to push this early bird in.
Absolutely, let's hear everyone, we, as long as the, you know, as long as the other person doesn't come in first.
Yep, yeah, the two, uh, the guy, when I hit the button last time, the guy came in right at that moment. So that's why I grabbed Herrera mistakenly. Had we known he was going to be that quick, you probably could have heard him anyway.
Yes, right, so organized.
I'm here, if you want to let the guy in.
All right, I'm good.
Okay, here we go. This is Rich Thompson, it says.
All right, great. Hello, good morning.
Hello there, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. Uh, we've got the full board here this morning, we've got our chair, Sean Britell, who's just joining us again.
Hi, Sean.
I'm Regina Pin, and we've got Lori Fernand. We're also joined by some of the, uh, members of the, um, the, uh, the town assessment, um, professionals, so we've got them on the line. We've got about 12 minutes per hearing, so I'm going to give you a quick oath, and then, uh, if we can jump right in and if you can walk us through, um, the appeal of the property.
Absolutely.
Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I swear.
Great.
Awesome, so thank you guys for, for joining me here today. I appreciate everybody's time here on the, this lovely Saturday afternoon, so, uh, this is my first hearing, so, uh, from, from your, your guidance, Regina, I just, I guess I'll state why, why we're having this call today. So, um, we, obviously recently with the, the new assessment, uh, we had received our, you know, a new market value and assessed value back in February. And just, you know, we're just shocked at the, the market value that was given to our home based on 2017 data, uh, that would ultimately determine the assessed value for, for 2017, so, um, you know, including some documents based on the research that we had, we have done. So has everybody had a chance to look at, uh, the supporting documents? Okay, so, you know, I would, the market value that was assessed by the town would be 374, uh, somewhere in that ballpark, I believe, 374, 328, based on, uh, the notification that we got, which would determine the assessed value at 262,030. So, you know, that was, the 374 is just what we were kind of shocked by, so, you know, the first piece of, of, uh, you know, support, I guess, that we included was, you know, comparable home sales that were, were listed, were, were sold in 2017 that were similar to our home based on square footage, based on baths and beds. The three houses were, were colonials, uh, in our neighborhood, and they were listed 360, 370, 360, which were all under the market value, you know, given to us by the town for, for 2017. Um, you know, and we're all aware of the, the term Simsbury Colonial, obviously the majority of homes here in Simsbury are, are colonial, so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's been historical data that the colonials have always appraised for higher than, than how, homes outside of that, that genre, so, um, second piece of, of info that was given, uh, was just based on 2020 data and just really shows the discrepancy in market value between a Cape and a colonial. So the two homes listed were, were, you know, very similar in square footage, very, very similar in bed and bath, and the colonial was 85,000 more than the Cape. So just, you mean, that just really shows that, you know, historical data shows that, um, you know, Capes just don't hold the value and, and are not, not considered the same value, uh, when refin, when, when doing an equity loan, when selling the home that a colonial would. And then the third piece of info that was included, we had an appraisal done in, uh, August of 2017. The appraisal came back at, at 348K, 348,000. Uh, 2020, it was a, definitely a stronger home market than 2017, so, you know, we feel like our home would have appraised for even less back in 2017. Uh, and it's, it's a shame that it came back at that number, we were actually penalized. We had to pay a higher rate, we had to pay more fees to get the refinance done, because the, the value of the home did, was just wasn't there to, to, to meet what we were looking to do, so, you know, I just, I feel that, you know, we've been penalized with the refi, you know, because of the house value and, and certainly when we, we sell the home, whenever the case might be, you know, to be taxed on a, a higher, uh, market value than we will ever realize, it just doesn't make sense, you know, there, there's no way that, that our home would appraise for, and sell for 374 in, in twen- in, in 2017. I think the, the data shows that and, you know, I just, I, I, you know, and, and you guys are from town, obviously you know the difference between Capes and Colonials and values, so, um, but just, you know, wanted to share that information, to make it aware and, and, you know, that's why we're here today, so.
Yeah, and, uh, thank you for that, Rich, uh, they definitely do, um, have different, you know, um, different values, and there's no doubt about that, um, and, and it's generally taken into consideration, um, on the property card. So we will go through, uh, with your supplied information here and, and try and make, um, uh, the best, the best we can. Uh, Regina or Lori, do you guys have any questions for Mr. Thompson?
I, I do not. Oh, outside of, the addition is now reflected, because you did have a, an addition built this last year.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
But all, all that was, you know, but we, when we compared the Thompson 2017, all those homes, the three colonials that we presented as, as evidence are all, you know, right around the same square footage and also right around the same square, square footage and bed and baths. So, you know, like I said, if, if, if Colonials were, were selling at 360 and 370, there's absolutely no way that this Cape even, you know, listed at the same square footage and bed and bath would be at 374. That's just, that's just what, you know, I, I wish it was the case, believe me, but it just unfortunately, you know, it's just not, so.
Good, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I have nothing else.
Regina?
Thank you.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, uh, we will deliberate after all our hearings today and notify you in the mail once we come to a decision, all right?
Okay, is there any next steps or action that, that I need to take at this point? Or just kind of wait from, wait for, to hear from you guys?
Yep.
Will that be a mail through the mail or an email?
Uh, mail, through the mail.
Okay, and do you have any idea what the timeframe of that might be?
Uh, we have to, we hope to be done today, so I would guess it'll probably be within the next week and a half to two weeks, probably tops.
Okay, awesome.
Because we got to get the grant list finalized, so.
Okay, well, again, I appreciate, uh, the time today, guys, thank you so much, and, uh, I guess we're, we're done, we'll give you six minutes back for the, to the Saturday, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody, take care. Yep, bye.
All right, so I'm guessing we have almost 10 minutes.
Yep. Turn on a few other lights, it got dark.
How much time do we have?
Yep, just less than 10.
Okay.
And you'll have another break unless, after this one that's coming in, unless the next person comes in on time.
Mine, I'd be ready to go back to our first appellate.
Mr. Greenberg?
Mr. Greenberg?
You mean very first in the day?
Very first of the day. Um.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Uh, Jason Boschbaum with Cohen and Wolf.
Yep.
And I'm generally thinking to take no action on that one. Um, I know they, you know, have been hit by COVID. I know there's a lot going on right now and it's challenging to rent office space, but it's such a significant number and I'm happy to.
Unless I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, that was an agreement to reduce it to that number, right?
There was an agreement previously reducing it, and then I guess the conversation proceeded that they can come back, this wasn't an official statement, they could come back and talk to us year by year to see how things go. But, you know, they're asking for, you know, mil- almost a million reduction.
I'm kind of surprised, uh, and I, I guess it doesn't really matter. Mr. Greenberg didn't come himself, he's been before us before.
Oh, okay.
But to each their, you know, it's certainly his, his, uh, right to do that, but either way, I, I, Lori, I, I support your, if you want to make a motion, uh, Regina, you're, you're, have any thoughts?
Nope, I, I hundred percent agree. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like the facts have changed since 2017. It seems like in 2017, this was a reasonable way. Doesn't mean they can't come back and do it absolutely within their rights, but I agree with the logic from 2017, and it's the same logic.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, when, we'll probably be coming back to these, um, in, if not, you know, next year, the, the following year. Um, and if, if they are still vacant, I think, you know, we're going to have some, some hard decisions to make, because there isn't a need for the space, but as it is today, and I think we're, we're good. So I, I'll make a motion for unique ID 31347300, uh, to take no action, can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody waiting still? Um, okay, so we did loten. I'm gonna re-caffeinate guys up right back.
You know, I'll take a quick break also. I'll be right back. And then if we have time to do, um, the Bushy Hill property.
We do have Mr. Christian on, in the waiting room. Everyone's ready.
Okay, let's do it.
All right. Mr. Christian is being admitted. Want to be where he is.
Yeah.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Christian.
On the property card, a sandy beach.
Good afternoon. How are you all doing?
We're doing well. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well. Um, I saw that if I wanted to submit additional stuff, um, I should have done it earlier. I didn't have anything additional to submit, but the package that I did submit, I can share it if you guys want to see it.
If I could just do a quick bit of housekeeping first, there's a brief oath I just have to give. Um, and then we'll, we'll let you go right into that. So, we've got the full board here. Sean is our chair. I'm Regina Penn and we've got Lori Fernand. So, the oath is, do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Great. So, I'm sorry. Go, go right ahead then.
So, do you want me to share? I, I guess maybe you should walk me through the steps here and then I can, uh, proceed.
Uh, usually what happens is the, uh, the property owner, um, has a reason for, for why they're making the appeal. And so, a great way to start it is if the person walks us through what the, the thought process was, and if there were things submitted, um, maybe use those to kind of tell, tell us, you know, what that basis is.
Okay. So, let me share and it's just gonna be the stuff that I submitted.
Great.
Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we have, we have a copy of that too.
Right. Okay. So, that's what I'm gonna walk you through.
Right.
Um, so essentially, um, my statement here is the value, the property value of my home fifty-three Grape Pond Road has been impacted by the deplorable condition of fifty Grape Pond Road, which is directly across the street. Um, it appears to be abandoned, um, since really no one's lived there for going on five years. Um, and discussions with your planning and zoning, Tom Hazel, um, reveals that the property has several leans on it. I, I believe it's been on foreclosure or some kind of, um, action with, with no resolution. Um, there is no visibility to me when this issue is going to be resolved with this property. So, it, you know, we've got essentially an abandoned property across the street. Um, we are concerned. A- actually, what I should state is prior to it being abandoned, the gentleman who lived there, I won't say he was of, on sound mind because I'm not a doctor, but, you know, leaves and stuff like that, he would never do it. I would actually go across and, and just essentially do the leaves so that when my kids, who had to take the school bus at the time, um, were going to school, they wouldn't slip on ice and snow and leaves. Um, so, you know, I had to do that back then. So, um, I think, so obviously, we're seeing a lot more activity of animals, raccoons, coyotes, um, since that property's been vacant. Um, so in addition to the impact from fifty Grape Pond Road, um, I believe we're also being assessed at a higher tax rate than the surrounding properties, including the property across the street. And I've got a spreadsheet to go over that after. Um, and then this one I'm not certain of. I think, you know, when I inquired about putting up a shed, I thought I was told that if it was below a certain square footage, it wouldn't be taxed, but it appears that it is being assessed and taxed. Um, and then I will go to slide three here. So, just kind of walking through, this is a view from across my house here. Um, it's really unsightly. Excuse me. Um, no maintenance or anything's been done, uh, forever. Um, it's unsightly. There, it's overgrown during the summer. The leaves in the fall, they blow across onto my property or they just hang out in the road or in this area here, which, you know, typically I'll, I'll vacuum. And there's no, no removal during the winter. Uh, it's a classic property where someone wanted to just find an abandoned building, go occupy that, that would be it right there. Um, in addition, oops. So, in addition, I think this picture got cut off, um, in the submiddle, uh, based on the copy. There's some cars on the property. It's actually, when you look at closely at these, there's, there's, it's been there so long that there's things growing in, 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 within the car or in the truck. Okay? Um, another view here is actually of the property, again, just a, a total mess, um, all around. And one more view. So, just showing, showing you a view across the street, looking at, uh, my property. Um, you know, we take meticulous care of this property. We're out there in the summer cutting the lawn, mulching, doing all kinds of stuff to, to make sure it is, uh, well up kept. Other piece here is looking at the, uh, the assessment on the property. And what I've got is just from Zillow here. Um, the fifty-three Grape Pond Road there, you know, looking at the public tax history, um, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty, just looking at the rate of taxing, you know, a, a significant growth here in twenty seventeen. Yeah, similar to what happened here. Uh, and then a twelve percent in twenty eighteen, whereas we got four point four here. Uh, and then, you know, similar reduction in twenty nineteen, but then they got a three point six percent reduction in twenty twenty where we're point six. So, I'm trying to understand again, it's a colonial, it's a quote unquote nicer type of house. Um, but yet I feel that we're being taxed at a much higher rate and be taxed being reduced at a lower rate um, than the property across the street, which in fact is keeping down a property of the, the, uh, value of our house. Um, let's see what else. So, the other thing I've done is I took a look at just some other properties on the street. Um, and just looking at the per square foot assessment, appraise and assessment. This is from your records. Um, and here's fifty-three Grape Pond Road. Um, you know, praise at this, assess that, that. Um, and what I did was I said, what's the assessment per acre and what's the square foot assessment for the buildings? So, here, we're about sixty point two eight dollars per square foot. As you can see, the rest, um, surrounding this area, forty-one, forty-five, forty-eight. There is another one, sixty-seven. Um, that's forty-six. That's a Cape and a ranch. Um, there's forty-five and forty-three. So, it just seems like overall, one, we've got an issue across the street with an abandoned property that I'm getting, um, higher taxes than they're paying, obviously, and they're affecting the value of the, of my property. And then in general, it seems like we're being taxed at a higher rate than the surrounding properties. So, that's the.
Uh, I have a question for you is where, where, where are you coming to the one fourteen zero twenty-four number?
One fourteen zero twenty-four. Um, let's see here. Square foot assessment, same as Grape Pond Road. Hold on. So, do you see here fifty Grape Pond Road, the green?
Yep.
The green represents here.
Yep.
Right? So, it's forty-five seventy-seven is the square foot assessment.
That's just the building component of it.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, um.
Um, is it just the building, not the property also?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question?
Um, so it seems, because you're, you're saying that your val- you think the value of your home is one fourteen twenty-four for just the building? That does not include your property, the land?
Saying if it was assessed at the same rate as fifty Grape Pond Road, this is what would be.
Um, and I guess one thing to share with fifty Grape Pond Road, you know, homes are assessed, um, based on condition. And that's why that home is paying so much less per square foot by looking at the fact that it's been abandoned. It's, I imagine it's, um, rated in, in poor condition. And so, that's why your home, because you are taking such great care of it and your lawn, you, you have, your home's in, in good condition, you know, average or good. I, I, I'll look at the card here. And so, you get, um, assessed a higher value on that because it is in good condition. So, it's of more value if you were to sell your home.
No, no, I, I understand that. But what I'm saying is it's, we're being assessed higher, but it's directly across the street. So, it, one would think that it would impact the value because if, if this home was in an area of all well-kept home, then all the values would be high. But when you've got one directly across the street, there's gotta be some impact.
Sure. I mean, I, I agree.
If someone comes to buy my property today and, you know, we, we're not sure when we're gonna sell, but, you know, someone comes to buy my property today, they look across the street, it's highly likely that, well, why would I want to buy here when there's an abandoned building across the street?
I, I, I understand, uh, your, because you, you have no control over that. And I, I do agree that there, you know, there is some negative impact. However, I would say, um, that if somebody wants to buy your house, it'll be sold tomorrow. But they're also gonna take into the fact, and maybe that affects their offer because of that across. So, it would sell because this market is crazy, but I agree, you know, that, that prop- I, I drive by it all the time. I know the house you're talking about. I always wonder myself, what is going on with that property? Because it actually was at one point a really nice house. So.
It's got a pool in the back. No one's there forever. I, I suspect that things are probably falling. That's probably why they can't even sell it on the, uh, foreclosure market at this point. Um, but I, I've been following up with the town just to see, even in the summertime, if they would even go by and at least take care. Sometimes I think they have the ability. They've done it at least once before where they have sent a crew over there and somehow assessed it back to the homeowner when he was there. Um.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, there's, there's a good and bad to that because once they do that, they're putting that lean on the property, which is going to potentially affect its sale. So, but for you, you just want, you, you know, you, you just want the, the property to look, you know.
Nice and be safe.
Yeah.
Sure sounds super, super stressful. Just a time check. We've got about two minutes, um, left in the hearing. Um, so, Mr. Christian, as I, I thank you. I, as I said a few times today, I love it when people come in with all of my questions in a table form that matches how I think really well. So, so thanks for doing the legwork. So, I just want to make, so what, what's, I followed all of the items that you've, you've talked about. And where I lost it just a little bit was that the, the number on your appeal paper, um, was the one one four number. Looking at this, I just want to make sure I, I'm understanding it. That one one four number is, um, based on this, your suggested assessment of the building. And so, for the whole, the whole property would be the building plus the land. And I'm seeing here that, um, it doesn't look like you've got an, a, a disagreement with the land part piece of it. Um, so it would just be focusing on, on the building, you know, using the data that you've got here, right?
Yeah. Well, you know, to be honest with you, if you look at the numbers, I thought from a building standpoint, I was being assessed high. And if I look at the land standpoint, compared to some of my neighbors, um, it's, it's obviously not equitable, right? You can see from my calculations, I'm being taxed about fifty, uh, the eight, the assessment per acre is fifty oh four four, whereas you've got some that are sixty-nine, a little bit higher. This one here is a lot higher, but you've got some that are twenty-two, two fifty-eight, which is half as much. You've also got a forty. So, uh, i- if there was some adjustment that could be made there too, obviously, I would be appreciative of that also. It doesn't seem like there is, I don't know what, what model or what calculations you, do you use? Because most of these houses, again, are pretty much in the same neighborhood. Um, so from a land standpoint, you'd think it would be similar.
Gotcha. Okay, great.
I can talk about that if you all want to know a little bit more about the land valuation. This is Francine, the assessor.
Yes, please, Francine.
All right. Um, the property in question has one point eight acres. The, um, house lot is, uh, point ninety-two, which is for zoning. So, that is at the one twenty-five. Anything above the required zone of point nine-two is currently assessed at forty-two hundred uh, per acre in excess. So, um, in this case here, the home site, um, is at the, uh, zoned. Um, and it's not smaller than the zone requirement. So, that's one twenty-five plus the thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars, which brings it to one twenty-eight, seven or six ninety-six. Some of the other properties I just looked at real quickly are, um, actually smaller than, um, the one that fit, the fifty went across the street. Um, that one, uh, is just above a little bit. So, it's just slightly over the one twenty-five. Um, what were some of the other ones that you were actually questioning, mister?
Right. So, if you look at this fifty-three Grape Pond Road, one point eight acre.
Yeah.
Right? And you've got fifty forty-four, oh forty-four. You've got, the closest one is fifty-five, which is pretty much next door, two point two five acre. And that's been assessed forty-six two seven. Right?
Forty-six two.
Per acre, per acre.
Oh, well, you have to. Yes. What, the way you have to do it is it's the first, you know, the home site, which is the minimal is ninety-two point nine-two acre of an acre. That is at one twenty-five. Anything above that. Okay. So, in this case, for fifty-five, their excess acreage or rear acreage is one point three three is assessed at forty-two hundred per acre. So, in this case here, uh, they have the regular home site, which is assessed at one twenty-five. Their excess acreage or rear acreage is five thousand five eighty-six, which brings them to one thirty-five eighty-six.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we've, uh, we, we hit our two minutes and then actually gone into the couple of minutes over there. So, um, to, to stay on track, I, I think we should, uh, we should wrap up.
All right. But it is important to go over this so he can understand and you can all understand this too. So. Okay?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I couldn't follow it in total, but if there was an email that I could follow up with you, Francine, I would really appreciate it.
Definitely. Yes.
I think, I think we've got, um, the board has, um, all the information we need, um, related to this. If there are issues related to that, um, you, I, you and Francine can talk. I don't think the board needs to be, um, part of correcting any, any, um, card.
Yeah. I, I was just wondering if there was an email for Francine that I could follow up outside of this meeting with her on.
Yes.
I mean, you, you're obviously free to do that. However, we're gonna close out, um, the, the Board of Assessment.
Sean.
Because we have to by, by law. So, uh, you could follow up certainly, but I'm not sure that.
Yeah. There is one item. Yeah, there is one item, Sean, that I would definitely recommend. He pointed out that I looked into the shed. Um, he is right, um, the shed, we have ninety six square foot and there is an assessment, and that should be removed. So, um, I can give you that information, you know, when you do your deliberations. So that, yes, I did see that. So that is a correction we should do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Christian, for joining us, and, um, once we do, uh, deliberate and make a decision, we will, uh, mail you something out, all right?
Okay, thank you very much, thank you all.
Take care.
All right, have a good day.
You too.
He was our most high-tech appellant yet. Oh, I almost cheered when he started screen sharing.
I know.
I was very happy about that.
We say you're a geek, Regina.
I, I am, I, I don't try to hide it. Man, your heart goes out to him though, huh?
The, I, I'm, I'm, that property across the street, I'm, I've been so curious about that for.
I could, I could hear your real estate, like, you're, you're, you nerd out too, we just nerd out on different things, you're like, I buy it, that looks great.
I, I wanna get my hand on that property.
Patience.
I don't have any money to buy it, but.
You do have close to fifteen minutes if you want to work. There's any questions that you have on any of them, or Francine?
Do you wanna, do we wanna just do that one while it's fresh, guys?
Okay.
The shed is the first piece. But I was thinking, somebody is going to buy that property across the street someday and make it beautiful.
There, there should be some sort of, I get it, the negative influence or something, um, maybe that we can do. It's been sitting forever.
I think he said five years.
At least five years, yeah. It's an awfully long time. And it's definitely not gonna happen anytime soon, because, uh.
Would it be the economic depreciation? Is that a nom that we could use for it?
Let me go to that, um. So the shed, the valuation on the shed is seven sixty six, which we will need to, to remove.
Okay.
The market value on it.
I mean, there's no way his house is worth a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
It's, um, you're talking about the obsolescence, uh, would be an external obsolescence, if you wanted to do anything.
Okay. I think that's the way to go then, remove the shed and the external obsolescence.
And add that, yeah. Whatever that number is.
Now, we're.
I don't think.
Let me do, let me do the shed and tell you what I come down to.
Yeah, the influence factors, that, that would be right.
That was where my head went, but I'm not.
All right. We're down to two seventy eight, eight sixty one. So what are you thinking for, uh, external obsolescence?
How, how do we, is it like a percentage?
Percentage, yes, yep.
I would say ten percent, maybe, guys, is that, is that a lot, or is that a little?
That's a lot, that's a lot, yeah.
Okay, then five percent, say. Cause that's something, right, that, that could be, if that property is rehabbed, that can just be removed from his, his card.
Yes, I would put a note, definitely, for that external obsolescence.
Yeah.
Sort of brings it down about another ten thousand, what I said was. Excuse me.
And that, that includes the.
So remove, remove the shed, and with a five percent, uh, external obsolescence. Um, it's nine sixty nine, nine fifty. Prior to that, we were at.
One oh five, one twenty.
Thank you. Two seventy nine, six twenty seven, so it's, um, so yes, like a ten thousand dollar difference.
I do think that's good, because I was almost leaning towards no change. I didn't know about the shed, but it's just hard, because we've had people come before us, before, or at least one appellant, saying that the house across the street, they, this was on, I believe, Wishy Hill, was in bad shape, and you didn't make any changes.
I remember what you were talking about, Lori, that was like, over the river, through the woods, to Grandma's house we go across the street.
Okay.
I know exactly the one you're talking about.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Francine.
And that wasn't, that wasn't an abandoned property, you know?
Exactly.
Is, that was, you know, they needed to paint their house, and those appellants didn't like that they hadn't painted it, you know, rather than a property that's.
It's somewhat abandoned.
Okay.
I mean, I'll say, in real, in real life, Sean, is like ten K about what you would expect that sort of situation would translate to into actual lost value on a, on the property if it was selling? I just wanna make sure we're not undercutting it.
Yeah, I, I, I would, you know, it's like I said to him, you know, okay, your house is definitely gonna sell, especially in this market, would it affect the offer if you looked at it? It would probably be right around, you know, uh, ten K.
Yeah, okay, great.
I think it's a fair.
Perfect.
Be, you know, easily readjusted down the road, but.
Francine, what was your revised market value with the five percent obsolescence and?
Uh, I removed, yeah, I removed the shed, and with the five percent, uh, it brings it down to two sixty nine, nine fifty.
Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion on unique property ID three one three six five five three zero to set the appraised value at two six nine nine five zero. Can I get a second for that?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our twelve forty five is here. Mister Hobbs. For twenty three Berry Lane. Shall I admit him?
I'm ready. Good morning, Mr. Hobbs.
Hi, good afternoon, how are you?
Good, good. Um, I'm Regina Penn, we've got Sean Britell, he is Chair of the Board, and we also have Lori Fernand. We've also got some of the, uh, town staff from the Assessor's Office here on the phone. Start with a quick oath, um, and then if you can jump right into walking us through the appeal, uh, we've got about twelve minutes per person today, so, you know, the floor will be yours right after the oath.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, great. Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Great.
Um, perfect, I, I, I was, uh, uh, obviously, uh, a little curious as to some of the numbers that, that we came up with, uh, after looking at other properties, um, in, in my zone, uh, R fifteen. And, uh, so I, you know, I went through the entire neighborhood and, uh, the, the document that I supplied you with, has four other homes that, that are similar in uniformity. Uh, some have, uh, the exact rating and some have better ratings, uh, you know, sim- similar size, uh, various, uh, difference in baths, but, uh, the assessed value of my home is considerably higher than some of these other homes. Uh, so, you know, I went through and gave you the information of, of those, the conditions, the square footage of the baths, the assessed values, uh, and then the appraised values as well. Um, so, while I do understand that, uh, some information became public upon my purchase of the home last June, due to the sale, uh, due to the sale, uh, I guess I'm just curious as to why my value is so much higher than similar homes of, of my, uh, in my, in my zone.
Thinking, cause, and looking at, you know, when you, it's looking at comparables, because I know, um, it looks like you had your finished basement improved upon recently, and then also, um, was it a walkout previously?
I don't know, to be honest, it wasn't my home, I didn't do the updates.
Okay, okay, oh, great, all right, thank you for that, um. And one of the things, you know, depending on a home's condition, there's a range of, um, ways homes are qualified as far as condition, and we have your home as being, um, updated from average to good, so that it's in, in good shape. So that could be a reason why neighboring homes might be different from yours. So there, there's a lot of factors that, that play into it.
Certainly, yeah, that, I, I just pointed out the Seven Northfield and Seven Stodmore, which are both of similar homes, which are very good, to good. And their, their total assessed value, uh, is, is one is fifteen thousand less and one is thirteen thousand less. So if that's it. Sorry, go ahead.
We have a, a market value of two eighty seven oh six?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and you paid, uh, June a third of last year, three fifteen for the property.
I did, but yes, that was because I had, uh, extenuating circumstances to get in the neighborhood, and I was willing to pay to get the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, and it is a great neighborhood, I, I live in it too. But, uh, was there any, was there any, um, concessions that, that maybe we can't see of that three fifteen, or no?
Uh, concessions meaning what, I'm sorry?
Concessions being like, did the seller pay closing costs, or were they crediting you?
Uh, I got five thousand, I ended up paying three ten. So she gave me five thousand back, uh, after, after I had an inspection done. But yeah, yeah, so two eighty seven oh six is my, was my appraised value for, for two, two thousand seventeen, I guess. Uh, but I, I was just gonna point back to the, the homes that I, that I, um, recognized of similar uni- uniformity, uh, specifically Seven Stodmore and Seven Northfield, which are, have appraised values of two sixty two and two fifty nine, yet their conditions are, are technically better than mine, according to your data.
And, and those numbers also reflect twenty seventeen.
These are all, these are all from the, the database of the property cards, it seems very much correct.
Yeah, no, I, I was stating that, so those were the appraised values at twenty, in twenty seventeen, I just wanted to pass that on, so.
And the one on East Tomstead, which is, you know, uh, it has one half less bath, but I mean, it's only sixty, sixty square feet different. I mean, its appraised value is two twenty seven, and it also has a good condition as well, as well. Um, so I, I, I guess my curiosity is more about why mine is so much higher to similar homes.
Okay, yep, um, uh, and the, the information you supplied will definitely help us, um, make a determination. Um, Lori or Regina, do you have any other questions for Mr. Hobbs?
I, I do not, but, but thank you for coming before us.
Oh, definitely, thank you for, for making time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for, for coming before us, and, uh, we will deliberate on this and make a decision, and you will be notified in the mail.
Okay. That's great, thank you very much, good luck with the rest of yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six more, or five more actually, right?
And our next person's not till one, I don't know if we wanna go back to another.
Yeah, let's try to get through what we can.
What's your, um, initial, are we gonna do the, the Berry one, we just did?
That works for me.
Yeah, that's fine.
I do, I do see, you know, in his graph, pointing out those properties being somewhat different. However, you know, I do see that he willingly just paid three fifteen for it, and we're only at two eighty on it. So I'm trying, as much as I'd like to, to try and have, I, I don't see. I don't see, right, any, you guys have any comments?
I, I agree with you, I really don't think there's a change we can make at this time. And I imagine some of those other properties in the reval, you know, there's a likelihood they'll go up if the market continues as it is. So.
Yeah, uh, you know, I'm, I'm guessing, without pulling up, um, a map, which I guess I could do, most, most of Berry Lane backs up to Woods. More, more favorable in his opinion, or in, in a buyer's opinion, I guess, that could affect these values, um, East Tomstead definitely doesn't. Those are all back-to-back properties. Harbor Circle forty one, that does back up to some Woods, I believe. Northfield backs up to Avery, uh, and Stodmore backs up to Berry Lane, and, uh, and Northfield, so. I think those are gonna affect some value at some point. So I, I guess my, I would say that take no action on this.
I would agree with that.
Regina?
Yeah, I concur.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, unique ID three zero one zero two seven two zero, uh, motion to take no action, can I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks, guys.
Okay. Should we do Thompson, the Four Hawks Lane?
Yep.
I, I was leaning to taking no action there too, with the additions, I, I need to look back at, at when the purchase was done.
If I may. If I may, this is Francine, um, I just wanna say that, yes, the addition was, it's a two-story addition, um, which the total assessment increased with, you know, um, everything that went with that. Um, uh, sixty two thousand four seventy, we did, uh, the house did remain as a cape for assessment purposes.
And I know there was the cost of that addition was included in the paperwork. Or at least I believe it was, there was a.
Sure made sense to me, the delta from the addition, just, you know, old to new, added sixty two K. That, I mean, that almost seems low for that amount of work, but it certainly. That, I mean, that almost seems low for that amount of work, but it certainly doesn't seem too high, so I think
Assessment purposes based on seventeen R seventeen valuation items.
Yes. And it still seems in line with the ten Virginia Lane, which is a Cape style. So even the Cape versus Colonial, it feels like we have a data point that says this is a reasonable amount for a Cape.
Yeah, the permit, uh, permit was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So the valuation was fifty percent of that.
The the appraisal was three forty-eight.
And that was without the additional, however, correct?
I think the appraisal was for the refi, which was done last year.
Okay, in order to, well, not necessarily in order to do the addition, then the addition was done after that, the three forty-eight.
No, my my no, no, because I'm I'm guessing they refied.
The appraisal was done after.
Yeah, after with, you know, if they did a home equity loan to build it and then you refi.
Okay.
Into one. That's generally the the way that you do that. So if you refi, they would need a uh an appraisal. Showing that, you know. Work done it, it it says kitchen remodel less than one year, bathrooms remodel less than one year. Subject property good condition, kitchen bath expansion and renovations were recently completed. A two-story fifteen by twenty addition was constructed to the rear of the dwelling. Ten by eleven portion of the former enclosed porch was heated and finished into a mudroom and eleven by the thirteen addition constructed. Former half baths converted to a full bath, septic and furnace were, that's a lot of work.
And what was the date of the appraisal, the three forty-eight?
It was last year. Worry together, let me not.
Uh, the valuation was done um as of August of twenty. If you go to page two of six.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm I'm inclined to to go with the the appraisal on this one, I don't think it's that far out of line. Or slightly over it, you know, understanding that, but i- if I'm going back. You know, um, she would probably be right in line with the appraisal, today it would be over the appraisal, right? That's what we have to do.
Yep, agreed.
Well.
So the
I I could go with that, it's um, I do, I do think it's of you know, slightly greater value, but um I I could work with the appraisal number also.
Yeah, the appraisal was as of eight nineteen twenty.
Yeah, I can get it, I can get it.
Okay, um, let's see, unique ID three one one two seven two zero zero. Set the market value at three forty-eight zero zero zero. Can I get a second, please?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Give me a minute and we do have Mr. Pradeep in the waiting room.
Okay.
Like a well-oiled machine today, I feel like, right?
Everyone's early, this is for twelve Masako Street.
Hello, good morning.
Hi.
Hi, Pradeep.
Hi, how's everybody?
Doing all right, how are you?
Uh, I'm I'm doing well, let me check all the names, Regina, myself, Lori, hi, and Sean, we tell, he's just walked away.
Yeah, so we're, we've got the full board here, Sean is the chair and then Lori and I are also on the board. And then we've got Jennifer and Francine who are uh the assessor and and staff from the assessor's office.
And they're on the phone.
They are, yep, so you know, if we've got questions that come up or we need something pulled up to clarify, we'll we'll tap them in and and they'll get us answers.
Yeah, I, o- okay, I I thank you for your time on Saturday, this is a
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but just a quick bit of housekeeping, I do need to give you a quick oath, if you'll just pardon me a minute. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, great, and we've got about twelve minutes, um, you know, per person today, so that was my last interruption, go right ahead.
Okay, I appreciate your Saturday times, first dry day after three days of rain, and I truly appreciate this. Um, the the what what prompted my appeal was the um increase in my assessment for forty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars uh on my property. Which seemed uh a rather unusual jump considering the the reason as explained to me by Jennifer was that this was my new garage and the room above. Um, my statement is that it's a replacement. Uh, the garage existed, the room above existed, the only thing that did not was a bathroom that I added. So, given that, I I don't see why, I understand to some degree that, yes, it's a brand-new one now as opposed to before. Um, so there has to be some adjustment to the assessment, but to the tune of almost forty-eight thousand dollars seems uh rather uh exorbitant to me. Um, I do have some questions, um, uh, so the questions may not come in the order, but they they will, they will emerge. Let's see, um, back in two thousand twelve, um, my, uh, the 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 land assessment was eighty-two three hundred. And the building assessment was eighty-one one twenty and the garage was fifty-two ten. And that continued that way through two thousand fifteen and sixteen. Unexplicably, the in two thousand seventeen, uh, the land went up to one oh eight eight ten, a thirty-two percent jump. I don't know how many pe- how many places in the in in town, the land value went up thirty-two percent. Uh, Lori, if you recall at the last meeting, I did contend that there were some outliers on Masako Street that sold rather high. Uh, and that didn't happen on Seminary, and that's why Masako was on an average hit by a twenty-seven percent increase in assessment, whereas Seminary was only about six to seven percent, which a- after my argument uh based on that, when I met with all of you, I don't know what, I know Lori was there, I don't know about the other two, excuse me if you were there too. My assessment was dropped by twenty thousand, the twenty thousand came out of my building assessment, not the land. The land continued to stay at thirty-two percent above the previous number of years of assessment. Um, also in two thousand eighteen, the value of the garage was dropped from, uh, well, yeah, two thousand seventeen. The value of the garage was dropped from fifty-two ten to twenty-four ten, and I don't know why is that? Does anybody have any, uh, uh, I know I'm dropping a lot of things on you, so.
And I can speak to, you know, Masako and Seminary being differently, you're talking about one is a through road and one is not. Okay, so they're going to have different.
I I beg your pardon, a through road is what?
But so, I mean, so Seminary connects directly to Firetown, right?
Okay.
Masako does not.
Um, there are two branches from Masako, does that make it more valuable than Seminary?
It does.
Have less traffic.
Uh, has anybody parked here and counted the number of cars going at, it it may be less through traffic, but that absence of traffic is more than made up by the number of cars that go up to Central every day at seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, then again at four o'clock or whenever the school lets out. Uh, so, yes, it may ha- it may not be a through street, but it does have as much traffic as Seminary. Oh, traveling way beyond twenty-five miles an hour and nobody does a thing about that, that's another issue. So, uh, no, I I do not, respectfully, I do not accept that because it's less traffic, it is a more valuable street. It is just as busy as Seminary.
Pradeep, can you, can you go back to, um, well, I guess I've got a couple of questions, one, the new garage outside of having the bathroom addition is the same footprint and the same as the previous?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and when the fire happened, what year was that?
January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, all right.
And Jennifer tells me that at that point, two thousand four hundred and ten was removed from the assessment. Um, because that the building had to be torn down. Uh, but my question is, prior to that year, uh, it had always been valued at five thousand two hundred and ten. So why was only two thousand four hundred and ten removed? Um, I had back in two, I I have three, three permits over here, when in two thousand nine, I put in a new roof. And, uh, let me see, what else did I do there? Stairway to access the storage space above the garage was twenty-nine fifty, and then electrical work that was done in two thousand twelve, thousand dollars, which my apologies, I apparently I never called back Col- uh, Colleen to tell her that that was done. But, so it did add some value, so why was only twenty-four hun- twenty-four ten removed from a destroyed building? So that's one question, what is the forty-seven nine seven oh increase in my assessment in the building based upon? Normally, I see it's all seventy percent of of market value. Um, so how does that, how does that forty-seven nine seventy come up?
Well, and and I'm wondering, since you, I I I'm thinking that reflects the new, the replacement of the building, some of that reflects the replacement of the building, but if the garage was cons- previously placed under outbuilding, should that number be there again now that we have the replacement building? Should be there instead of in the building?
Yeah, now it's, everything is added to the main building as opposed to breaking those two out.
Okay.
Also, uh, the paperwork that I received from Jennifer uh lists the garage and the room above a single family. It's not a single-family home, there is no kitchen, and I was specifically told that I cannot, I cannot put a kitchen up there, it cannot be rental property. It cannot be a single-family home, it's when the kids come over, they spend some time there, um, which has been useful during the pandemic. But it is not a single family.
Okay, that's that's good to know also, until we'll make sure that that is reflected here.
Sean, I believe you live on Seminary?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I I'm looking at your your application, you didn't have um the appellate estimate of the market value of your property is blank, do you, do you know it, do you have a?
No, I don't, I I have no, I have no intention of selling, I have no, I have never talked to any uh any real estate agent to find out what's uh what's to be done. It's also, it's the market value, the assessed value of my home, primary home, the main building, used to be eighty-one one twenty for the longest time, and it jumped up fifteen percent in the same year when the property jumped up, when the land jumped up thirty-two percent. I this
Yeah, and I mean, it wasn't, that was across across the board all around.
No, it was, it was much more as I, as according to the spreadsheet that I presented at that time, it was much more on Masako. And there were some houses that felt more on Masako, uh, then then it was about three or four times on Masako compared to Seminary. Uh, I I know you expressed um surprise that you'll see my, you might have, you might be seeing your taxes go down since that assessment. And that was because the mill rate went down, even though your assessment went up, the assessment overall average on Seminary was just seven percent. I still have that spreadsheet, I can renew the whole thing. Um, but that's, we're we're relitigating an older issue. Uh, though that concern still lives in my head as to why Masako is considered um so much more valuable.
Our goal here, right, is is to be taxing the properties at at the assessed value, which is seventy percent of what the market value is.
Yes, but who determined, it's a, it's a chicken and, sorry, my apologies, go ahead.
Yeah, I I don't, we don't, you haven't given us any numbers to what you believe that the market value is that we can even
Yeah, but 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 then I contend that you haven't given me any valid uh reasons why you considered my house to be suddenly worth more, based on what? So i- is the, is 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 the assessment, does the assessment determine what you consider my market value to be or vice versa?
Well, the mar- yes, yes, it does.
That's why you see the jump in twenty seventeen, periodically, every every five years, there's a an effort and apologies. Uh, yeah, the 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 town hires professional, you know, firms that that do this. And and as you pointed out, one of the things they they try to take into account is that different neighborhoods or or streets within neighborhoods, um, you know, would be more or less uh desirable.
Should should I, should I spend uh two days counting the number of car traffic on Masako and then on Seminary?
I I I I wouldn't do that, Pradeep, I think what we need to do is take a look at the new building and how that impacted the recent jump. Um, because I, you know, that's something that that we can look at, and also I'm wondering if it should be under outbuilding versus building. Um, but I think, you know, as far as the the land, that has been steady since that change in twenty seventeen was, which was reflected the re- revaluation that went on throughout town. And um, and I'm not remembering when you came before us, I I I I know you did, but I don't remember the particulars, just because it it's hard to keep all this data in our head. But um, you know, there is definitely an advantage to not being on a through street, just like, you know, being on a cul-de-sac, you know, there's, there's different values that are placed into the document, and I don't know if you froze and we lost you.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good, oh, right, you're there.
I came in two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so it's right after the revaluation.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where I I did question why it went up and and uh, but I did not take a look at exactly what the individual components were, how much was the land and how much was the building? Um, the building went, the land went up thirty-two percent and the building went up fifteen percent. And when you did offer a reduction in my assessment, you took it entirely out of the building, but not the land. Because it going forward, it allows you to maintain a tax base. With the land being what it is, you can, you can adjust the building, and the building keeps going up, more chance of the building going up than the land going up, and it allows the town to collect a good amount of tax, I mean, I understand why you did that, but it it could have been split between the two and
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but but that beeper was us being just about out of time, if if there's maybe one, any, any final things we want to make sure we get in our notes?
Yeah, the final thing is, based on what did you make forty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy increase? Why is a garage list, oh, it's a number of things, why is it garage listed as single family and it's not?
Okay.
And why was the, why was the assessment of the garage uh and the room above removed from, reduced from fifty-two ten to twenty-four ten? And so on, I mean, the 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 other things should have been removed there too, so. I'm sorry, I I contend that this is uh, this is egregious.
Okay, um, thank you for your testimony and coming before us today. Uh, the board will deliberate and we will uh mail you a notification of our decision, all right?
Uh, let me see if there's any other question. No, I think, um, I know you have limited time, uh, but, um.
Well, we'll look to answer those questions.
Um, no, I think this is all Um, now, I think this is all right now as to, I, I posed my questions and I think this is, uh, I contend that this number is wrong. I do understand that it's all a brand new building and hence I had better use of it than I did before. But it did have a new roof before. It did have the stairway before. It did have the landing. It did have the space above. It did have the garage. It did have the doors and everything.
Okay.
Why only twenty-four-ten removed?
Gone over time and I think we have all the information in our packets and, and your testimony to help us.
I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay. Um. I only have two minutes. Oh, excuse me.
My personal goal for the next one is to say good afternoon and not good morning. Like I've. Everyone since noon.
Okay. Let's see, this is the number we're supposed to be getting a call from? Possibly, but I'm going to assume that this is our next one, Simsbury Property Group for eighty-eight Hat Meadow.
Sounds good.
Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hi, who are we speaking with?
Uh, Mike Reiner.
Hi, Mike. Uh, we've.
Hi.
Excuse me, we've got the full board here. We've got Sean Bertell, who's our chair. I'm Regina Penn and we also have Lori Fernand on the board.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
We're also joined by folks from the assessor's office, um, who are there in case, uh, we have any questions. I'm gonna.
Okay, sure.
I'm gonna give you a quick oath and then the floor is going to be yours to, um, to walk us through the appeal.
Okay.
All right. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Great.
So I have a very short presentation. Um, the property was traded and sold, uh, in an arms-length transaction to my client for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, back in two thousand nineteen. And since that time, uh, they actually regret the purchase because they've been unable to rent it. It remains, uh, fully vacant to this day.
Why, what is the, not that this is the most important fact, but I'm just wondering, why, um, do they feel they've been unable to rent it?
They just, there's just no market for it. I, I mean, obviously they, they had it for quite some time, didn't rent it, and then with COVID, it's, it's, uh, office space is just almost impossible to, to rent right now.
Oh, oh, I'm apologies. It's office space. Okay, I was not getting that.
So has it been vacant since twenty nineteen?
Yes, since they bought it, uh, before they bought it and when they bought it, they thought they, so it's been vacant the whole time.
So, um, your, your client's opinion is that the property is worth two hundred thousand dollars? Is that, is that right?
That's, that's correct. That's what they feel it's worth right now.
That they're, they're basing that off.
They paid three twenty-five, just what they, they're sophisticated buyers. They just, they thought they were getting a, a, you know, a fair trade and, and it wound up not being that.
Okay. That was even at three twenty-five, so they're even dropping.
Correct. Correct.
Always for, I mean, we, we're at six hundred and seventy-seven, so we're not even in the same ballpark here based on what your clients are, um, assuming it to be.
I, I had one other question, because you're saying a fair trade. So was there something outside of the direct purchase of this property for three twenty-five?
No, I mean, no, I, I meant that they, they, they thought they were getting a, a good deal at it, but turns out they don't feel they did now at this point.
Um, no, I mean, it's, to me, it seems like a pretty good deal. Um, I, I get that, that COVID has definitely an effect on, on the ability to rent out, um, office space. Um, but, you know, we recognize that.
Do you have a little more information to walk us through the town's market value and then its two hundred K value? That, as I think Sean said there, that's quite a big jump and I'm, I'm not quite pulling from the, the packet, um, the, the rash, the walk behind that.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Could you walk us through a little bit more, um, how, how the team came up with the two hundred K number? Uh, it's, it's so different from the six seventy-seven the town's got. I'm, I'm trying to do that walk there.
I, I, I don't, I don't know. That's what they told me that they thought it was worth based on the current market conditions. Uh, they paid three twenty-five. They think it's gone down considerably. There's just no market for office rents right now. It's, it's, uh, uh, and that's what they feel that they would get if they were to try to resell it.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I do want to say I recognize that it's, it's a very tough market for them right now. Um, I, I don't think that you, in my opinion, have given us enough information to make that much of a change without any sort of supporting documentation of other properties, other, that, you know, um, that aren't rented and what their values are. Um, but, uh, Lori or Regina, do you have any other questions?
I do not.
I'm good.
Um, the board will deliberate and we will notify your client, um, of our decision via mail. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you very much. I do not. No, thank you.
Okay, have a good day.
You too.
I lose the paperclip every single packet.
As long as those papers stay together, Sean, that's.
They are. I keep finding him though.
That's good.
Me may multiply. I end each session with one to four more than I started.
Have a little time here, about ten minutes or so. Our next one should be a call-in from the road.
Do you want to, since we just?
Yeah.
On this one?
Yeah.
Uh, my, my inkling is to take no action on it. Um, you know. I get it, you know, I, and I think we're gonna, I don't know what the fix is for, and, and this is probably something that's gonna need to come from the, the state as to what we do with this glut of office space or the, the town, you know, the board of selectmen or somebody other than us. Because this is definitely going to be an issue moving forward, I think, not just for Simsbury, but for all towns and cities on what's due with all this office space that, um, nobody wants, but, um.
And that is the reason, let me just chime in real quickly.
Yeah.
Um, as the assessor, and that is one of the main reasons why revaluations went from a ten-year cycle to a five-year cycle.
Yeah.
And is to look at the market at a shorter period of time to make adjustments.
Right, and, and, and I completely agree with that. I think this, this is a little outlier because, um, who knows if those, those office jobs are going to come back.
Mm-hmm, or some sort of creative approach to it. And, and I think the smaller office spaces in Simsbury might be more appealing going forward than people going to larger buildings in Hartford. But who knows, like it's a brave new world that we're walking into in this issue.
In, in relation to this, you know, without any supporting documents other than saying, this is what we think it is, then I, I don't see any, 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 any reason to, to make an adjustment.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
Let's end it at that. Unique ID three-one-four-five-eight-nine-three-one, motion is to take no action. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, it will be very interesting, the upcoming revaluation, definitely.
Yeah.
But homes going up and businesses having a different look, so.
Yeah. We, we, the office has been getting a number of calls inquiring about what's going to happen because of these market, the current market and the prices soaring. How's that going to affect the rebound?
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, um, our mil- it will bring our mill rate down and kind of keep it level. That would be.
Mm-hmm. And then, and it's good for our homeowners to have the prices going up. What's that, Sean?
If any of the other town boards are listening.
All right, so our next is one fifty. Oh, so we have open time now.
Let's get through them.
No, actually we have a call-in coming because our eleven.
Oh, okay.
Switched to one thirty, but.
Oh, that's right.
You still have eight minutes.
Okay. Um. So where do we want to go next? If there's any that are.
The, the Masako.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I'm kind of on the same, uh, take no action here. Um, he, again, you know, didn't even give us the value that he thinks it's worth. He just had a brand-new building and forty-eight thousand dollars for a brand-new garage with a, with a, you know, a room above it. Doesn't seem that crazy to me. You guys?
Are we reflecting it properly on the property card, though? That's the thing I was wondering. And so I'm thinking if we could provide some answers, even if we're ultimately not making a change, I think that would be helpful. And I'm sure he's spoken with Francine and Jennifer.
Yes, this is Francine. I did go at length with him a couple of times, actually, trying to explain to him the twenty-four-ten assessment that he's referring to for the old garage. We couldn't remove more than what the garage was being assessed for when it was torn down. And that was the assessment for that outbuilding at the time. All right, so that's what was removed.
Can I ask one question to that? So then there was no reflection of the fact that, of the fire, you know, the.
Oh, yes.
You mentioned that five thousand.
The assessment, when the garage burnt down and was leveled, the assessment of that building was two thousand four-ten. In removing that outbuilding, it removed the assessment of twenty-four-ten. He then took permits to rebuild. The same footprint, yes, size-wise is what was, you know, approved. Uh, however, this is a brand-new building. It, um, it, originally it was a very old building. Yes, maybe it was in a lot better condition than probably we were assessing it for. That could very well be, um, but I can't go back to that and say, um, the new building, same size footprint. However, the, uh, story above is considered a studio, uh, office. There's, um, you know, full bathroom, um, office in there, um, deck. So the way it, in reviewing it and doing the fieldwork on it, um, it was added as a separate building. It is, it's not, it's labeled as one's, uh, single family because that's what the property is. It's one single family. All right, it's not, it, it is not a livable, it's not, it was not approved as an apartment. That's not what it's being assessed for. It's being assessed for a garage with a, an office, you know, like that's what we call it, a studio.
Okay.
And because of the, the extent of it, it was added as a separate building.
And it has a, and it has a full bath, right?
Exactly, yes, yes.
But is it added, it's added into the building amount, not as an outbuilding?
An outbuilding would be different.
Yes.
Why wouldn't it be?
Well, the other, the other, the original garage that burnt looked like that was considered an outbuilding.
It was an outbuilding.
It didn't have, uh, a restroom in it.
It was considered as an outbuilding. It was considered as a garage with a, I believe, a, um, one, uh, like a half-story above, like a finished area above. This case here.
Orange space.
Because of the extent of it, um, it is being, uh, assessment-wise, as soon as it has, you know, either a kitchenette or a bathroom or something like that, it's getting added as a separate building and assessed for whatever it is, okay? Um, so the value on it is fifty-two thousand.
Even without a kitchen, so just having the, the plumbing for the bathroom triggers that?
Yes, is the way for capturing it. So it's being current, yeah, it's, uh, it's being currently assessed as a studio, uh, office area above a garage.
Um, and, and looking at the difference between land and, and the building, that you, you've also had those discussions too, as far as the building.
Yes, well, the val- the, yeah, the land value has not changed. Uh, it's in line, it's, you know, that, um, with all the other properties on Masako. Um, that did not change because of the garage.
And so I think.
I would say that his property is easily worth three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, easily.
Yeah. All right, so I, yeah, I'm agreeing that we don't really have, you know, it makes sense with this brand-new building also being triggered to the next level since it has a restroom in it, that it's going to be that kind of cost.
In, in this case, just as a comparison between permit cost and valuation, permits totaled eighty-eight, just over eighty-eight thousand dollars. Valuation is fifty-two thousand.
That's what was added to the building?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm good with, yeah.
I am too.
He's like downtown. That's, that's really sought after, you know, those, there's only like six or seven houses on that, on that part of Masako. And they're all, well, worth well over that much, in my opinion. All right, so, um, Lori.
Motion?
Yeah, the motion would be, um, uh, unique ID three-one-seven-six-zero-nine-seven-zero to take no action. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. So we still have four thirty-seven Bushy Hill and ten Cobtail Way.
And we do have a phone appellant entering. This should be Mr. MoMA from sixteen Masako Street.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Good. Who are we speaking with?
You're speaking with Reginald MoMA, Tony Allo. I'm sorry, I'm talking to you while I'm taking my son to a basketball tournament in New York.
Oh, no problem, Mr. MoMA.
Thank you.
You've got the full board here. We've got our chair, Sean Bert- Bert, I'm sorry, Sean, I'm butchering your name today, aren't I? Our chair is Sean Bertell. I'm Regina Penn and we also have Lori Fernand. Hello.
Thank you, hello.
Also on the line, we've got, uh, the assessor Jennifer, um, and Francine from her, Francine, the assessor, and Jennifer from the team. I'm going to give you a quick oath if I cannot, uh, not butcher that too. And then we'll, we'll let you get right into walking us through the basis of the appeal.
Yes, you're, you're welcome. Thank you.
Great. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I, I do.
Great. So floor is all yours if you want to walk us through what we've got?
Yes, I, um, I received the, um, the increase in, uh, the property value. And I looked through the, the reasoning behind the increase and, uh, it didn't, it, it was not supportable. Because when we bought the property, there was, uh, all the improvements or whatever that was mentioned as the basis. Um, we are not made, we didn't do any improvement on the property, not one single improvement. The only thing we had done was, because there are two elderly ladies that live on this property. Um, we had, um, put li- uh, lighting, um, on the front entrance so that, um, they'll be able to go in and out of the apartment without, uh, stumbling or falling or injuring themselves. And the insurance company specifically requested that, that we have to do that before they will issue the insurance binder. There were additional things that we did. Uh, one was, uh, repairing the, uh, the driveway, which had a huge crack. And we are concerned that, um, somebody may have fall down taking out their trash, so we repaired that. Um, there was no other thing of significance that we did that, uh, supports an increase in the property value. And also, and most importantly, the, the, two of the tenants are elderly ladies. And they have no income. Or they have fixed incomes, so they have, uh, uh, made clear to me. And they've also made clear that they are not able to pay any increase in rent. Um, so the consequences of this, um, may be that they would, um, be unable to stay on the property if this, uh, increase in assessment is made. Because we evaluated the property before we made the purchase, and we purchased it based on, um, all the information we had at the time. If we had known that there was going to be this increase, uh, uh, this proposed increase, maybe we would not have bought the property or we would have insisted on a reduced, on a reduced price. Uh, the documents that I provided to you showed the repairs that we had done on the property, and those repairs were, are all remedial. Repairs, they are risk related repairs, so that the tenants do not sustain injuries, uh, uh, coming in and going out of the property. Uh, so there, there were not repairs that were done to improve the property in any way. And that's the basis of, um, of, of, of the appeal. And I'm glad to answer any questions, uh, from the panel, uh.
Uh. Good afternoon, um, Mr. MoMA, this is Sean. We are showing a, a corrected amount of 374229 as the value of the property?
I, I don't know, I don't have that figure in front of me. Whatever the figure, um, that supported the, uh, existing property tax is the figure that we relied on in, uh, in making the purchase.
In your, in your application, you, um, say that the market value of the property is 342,000 and change, okay? You, you purchased the property in October 15th of last year for $485,000. So I'm trying to find that $150,000 reduction, uh, in the past year that, that you're claiming.
The, the.
We're only at 374, you paid 485. And now you're saying the market is 342.
The, uh, again, I don't have that figure in front of me since I'm driving, but, but that figure is from, um, the information that we, uh, we obtained, uh, through the town. The purchase price we paid for the property, uh, we realized we pay, we overpaid for the property. Uh, but that's not the, that's not the issue. Um, uh, uh, the, the market price that we paid, I don't believe is the basis for, for the property tax assessment. Um, yeah, it shouldn't be the basis for the property tax assess- assessment. Uh, I realize we overpaid for it, uh, um, because we had bought it with the hope that our children, um, uh, will move into it. Um, that was the, that was the intent. Uh, and that is still the intent if the tenants, uh, uh, whatever time they decide to move out.
Right. Yeah, I mean, our, our intent really is to, to define the, figure out the market value and then the assessment of, that you're taxed at is 70% of that number. So we're at 374, you purchased it at 485. That's the market value, right? The market value of the property today is 485.
That, that is not, that is not necessarily the market value, and that's the point I'm trying to get across.
It's an arms length transaction you were willing to pay 485. That's what the market.
It is, it is an arms length transaction, but I'm also sure that you are aware that a number of properties have been purchased at a high price only to, uh, to be sold at a much lower price uh, because of the, uh, of the current market. Um, and that, yes, the agent, the agent, uh, made that clear to us. Um, in fact, there was, there was another property, uh, uh, that we had thought would, uh, would take instead of this property. That property was listed for 300, uh, about 390, but was purchased for 485. Yeah, was, yeah, so, so the market fluctuation should not be the basis.
Well, I understand that, uh, that's why we have a revaluation every five years, okay? So, um, you know, I think we're about two years out from that happening again. But, um, I, I think we've got all the information there, at least I do. Uh, Lori or Regina, do you have any other questions for Mr. MoMA?
I, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Regina?
Sorry, I'm good. Thanks for joining us on, on your drive.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
And, uh, we, we will deliberate and make a decision and notify you by mail, alright?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, take care, have a good day.
You too, thank you.
That's Mr. Perdue's neighbor, I believe, right?
It looks that way, because then I was looking, I was like, oh, they're both on Masako.
They're probably, I, I'm pretty sure they're 12 and 16. I, I'm not sure there is a 14 there.
Okay.
There isn't.
Okay. Um, I feel ready.
Do we have the next appellate on, or can we close this one?
I'm thinking we can close this one if they're.
I see notes on the card of this about a clerical error and a proposed adjustment, and I just, I, I just can't tell if that's been, if we corrected an error and now it's higher, or we caught an error when, when they put their appeal together. If Jennifer or Francine could help me through that.
Sorry about that, Regina. What are you saying?
On the field card, I'm seeing.
Here, yeah, go ahead.
Which property are we talking about? 16?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Your question is?
I see. You go ahead, Sean.
Okay, sorry. The adjustments that you made, do we need, are those good, or does the board need to enact this 374 number that you've got here?
That's, um, something, um, that I'm, need to review with Jennifer. So if you want to table that until later on, let me confirm with Jennifer what happened at that point and what needs to be done, if anything.
Yeah, sounds.
Was that your question too, Regina?
It was, it was, kind of which, what, what do we have and is it something we need to? Because I, I would hate, I would hate to unnecessarily make the adjustment and then we're, you know.
Yes, so let me review that with Jennifer. That's, uh, one that Jennifer had worked on, and, uh, she needs to go over a couple items with me. So let me clarify that with her and see if there is any adjustments to, uh, that, um, the board needs to take on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, my guess is if it's done on the card, it's already done, right? And we don't need to do anything, but, you know.
Yeah, I guess, Jennifer, there is one, um, we, Francine and I need to review one portion of that card. And we can get back to you with that. So maybe we'll just put it aside for now?
Yeah, let's review that, um, towards the end. It gives us some time, uh, in the deliberations, uh, I'll review with Jennifer.
In the meanwhile, you have about 10 minutes here.
Oh, alright. So Jennifer, um, the, the card that we have after correction says 374229. Is that a number that, uh, if the board chooses to, should, or is that already done? Do we need to take action on it?
Uh, unfortunately, just, I got booted. I'm trying to get back in. I believe that is the standing value.
Okay.
Which is what we need to compare against. Is there some kind of a assessor adjustment that needs to happen before you guys can? Or that we can present to you guys as consideration?
Okay, so, okay. I guess we could do it this way, um, just to cover both of our bases, would be to.
We will be able to tell you before the end of today.
Why don't we? Make a motion to set it at that number and then we're good, whether we had to do it or not, right?
The only reason I don't like doing that is then we are making an adjustment. And if it's just.
To the 374.
No, I know, but if, if.
The 374, I can clarify, includes the adjustment for.
Actually down from 374.
Yeah, I took an action, I grabbed a wrong condition value.
Okay.
I changed it and made the 374 is the correct value. It previously was higher than that by my mistake. So I've taken my mistake out already. So yes, you're looking at 374. Is that clear?
So if we took no action, it would stand at the 374 number?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the motion on 309 85200, 16 Masako Street is to take no action. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Just have Israel and Herrera. I'm seeing the Herrera's name correctly. Herrera.
I've got Israel on the top on my paper, if we're just going to pick one.
Okay.
So at the end of that conversation, uh, so this is, no, 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 437 Bushy Hill? It sounded like there was a conversation starting about actual number of bedrooms, which seemed like the most productive thing to focus on with that property. Because I, I don't think the comps he was pointing out are, are super useful.
Um, one other potential adjustment I was going to mention is looking at the, um, pictures online. I don't know if we can move from average good to average. Because it does look like, you know, the kitchen hasn't been updated a while. There, there's work to be done there. So I'm not sure if that might be a possibility also. Because what he paid not that long ago is, um, 45, like 90,000 less than what we have it appraised at.
So, and, and I appreciate the workup done. I've got a page here, which is the real estate listing. And I assume, I assume this was Jennifer, um, unless the, the appellant dropped it in, uh, counting through the listed number of bedrooms, and that seems to validate the conversation we were having at the end, which is the field card says six bedrooms, but we're only finding five?
As that seems to be what it appears to be, yes. From the Realtor listing.
Excuse me. People don't tend to forget bedrooms in the Realtor listings, right? It's usually the, this closet, you could fit a twin in here, right? So, um.
Me do, I, I am going to interrupt you. Our 150 is here.
Great.
But it's, uh, actually showing two people because it's, I believe, the same appellant for each one.
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to finish this, that's fine. There's about four minutes before their scheduled time. Or we can table.
Let's try and finish it, right?
Okay.
So if we made that first adjustment, which is aligning the number of bedrooms from the six there to five, um, what, what impact does, could I ask what impact does that have?
Sure. It, there is no impact. It's not, you know, it, it, there's no impact.
It's just square footage, it's not.
Yeah, it's not. You get to a certain point where, depending on the square footage of the house, you know, there's a minimum of bedrooms that would be required for a certain square footage. And then, you know, you get to a maximum too. Anything, you know, uh, below, if it was a minimum, it says, you know, uh, certain square footage house, you know, typically should have two bedrooms and only has one, you would have, you know, an impact there. Uh, same thing goes the other way. You get to a certain point where, you know, certain square footage, you know, um, typically there should be so many bedrooms per square footage. Um, you go above that, there's no, you know, um, there's no value adjustments. Do you concur with that, Sean?
I don't have any, I have a comment there.
Then I'm wondering, do we have room as far as the, um, condition of the home? If we did average good to average, that, that might better reflect what they paid for it. And, um, and I, you know, I just looked at the pictures on, um, the listing. Maybe it wasn't Zillow, but definitely, um, you know, things have not been updated in a while.
Two to 348.
Excuse me?
Alright, Sean, could you repeat that?
The, the appraisal is 272, and we're at 348. It's definitely a big, a big gap there.
Yeah. And, and they purchased for 265. So I was wondering if we moved the condition down to average from average good, how that would impact?
Was the appraisal, was the appraisal included?
Yes.
Okay.
Not as a 482020.
So again, it's a this year appraisal, but it's so much lower, even though the market is what it is.
And he had asked, he said something like, I, I just think it should be 5% lower. Which really doesn't get him, you know, that's like 17,500, I think, off of the 348, which does not get close to the 272, but, um, it was interesting, he put that number out, and I'm not sure what exactly he was referring to, but.
And he paid 265, the appraisal was 272. Andy got $2,000 in closing credit.
So that's.
You did well.
So Lori, that sounds like your suggestion was to change the overall condition from average good to just average?
And see, and see what that does to the total price.
Right, I just did that, and it reduces the building value of about $5,000.
Okay, that's not much.
Was any work done since he purchased it? I didn't pick up on that.
Actually, I, I didn't ask. It didn't sound like it.
I can check to see if permits have been taken out.
Okay.
It looks like in June of twenty twenty. Oh, sorry, estimated completion. So I maybe it looks like something was done. Cost of nine thousand. Sound like a deck or something like that. Oh, wait, that was May. Was that permit never closed?
Um, the permit for the that's a mechanical central air heat that was taken.
Yeah, replaced AC and it's still in issued status. That doesn't mean it's not completed. It just has not been closed. And that's the only permit noted in the system.
Yep.
Now, do we know if this was an arms length transaction or if this was a hardship? Because that is a big difference.
Mm hmm.
And we have this currently as a class nine house with a minus ten factor, so.
Maybe we should table this and take our our one fifty here.
I think so that it's such a it's such a big house for even the appraisal to come back that low. It just doesn't. Like, I get it. I get it's Bushy Hill, but that's a there's a lot to that house.
But I think looking at the kitchen, I mean, I don't think it the house was built in the seventies. I think it doesn't look like the kitchen's been updated possibly since then. So and you know, there was there was a good deal of cosmetic that would need to be done for it, I would believe, but.
Yeah, I.
Okay, let's come back to that.
Okay.
We're tabling it. Okay, we do have our appellate here. Um, there are two Jeffrey Bravanti and Stephen Bravanti.
Great. Hello, good afternoon.
Hi, Steve Bragenti here.
Hello.
Hi, Steve, and I think we've got. Hi, hi, Jeffrey.
Hello, Regina.
Thanks for joining us today. We've got the full board here. We've got our chair, Sean Bertel. I'm Regina Penn, and we've got Lori Fernand too. Also on the line is our assessor Francine and Jennifer, who's from our assessor's office. I'm going to give you both a quick oath and then if you want to jump right in and have you guys walk us through the cases.
That'd be great.
All right. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give concerning this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Yes.
Great.
There one we should be taking first between the two properties.
Can we, is it presentation that they're going to be kind of intertwined? There really is.
Okay.
First and second, actually.
Okay.
Go ahead, guys.
Well, maybe maybe Jeff, I'll go just briefly. If you didn't know, we were closed April, May, June, and July at both hotels, um all our hotels. And then we tried to reopen when the state allowed us a bit in August. And we did reopen and we opened through November. In November, we found that we were losing much, much more open than if we shut the hotels down. There was virtually no business whatsoever in November. And for instance, the Simsbury Inn lost a hundred thou- ninety-nine thousand before interest in operating costs in in November. And then in December, when we closed, it still lost a hundred and two thousand. But by January and February, we reduced the losses to sixty thousand a month before interest. This is just on an operational level. Now, what we did is we kept the eighteen twenty house open for a couple of reasons. One, even though we're losing money, we needed to have continuity of operations to take reservations and to deal with the people who are calling in, wondering what's going on. And so we thought it was the least expensive to keep the eighteen twenty house open, uh which we did. And what we found is basically um our administrative and general costs, like accounting and management and HR, we had to sort of keep that path in place. Our marketing, uh we still had to pay healthcare for all our our marketing staff um and keep them at least answering the phones, even though they went on unemployment. Repairs and maintenance largely remained almost the same costs as it had as if we were open, because you still had to mow the lawn and and um snowplow and weed kill and and pay exterminators, et cetera. And utilities largely went on as well. They weren't, we weren't really capable through the winter of cutting as much as we liked in utilities. And of course, property taxes went on identical to as if we were open and insurance was not reduced. So if you could see, we're largely a fixed cost business. And the way it works in our business is that the hotels hotel rooms, seventy-five percent of sales actually falls to the bottom line to pay those overhead costs. So with no sales, um it was basically a a major mess. Now, um just to throw some things out, um the what's happened in the segments of business. As you know, uh Cigna for all intents is zero, closed out. Hartford Insurance Group historically had been closed in the Simsbury market and and um and largely they closed down in your other uh Bloomfield uh markets. So basically, all business ceased and still is ceased and will not recover until um September. When you talk about business demand, the general consensus is that only ten to fifteen percent of occup- of offices are occupied of major companies. It will it'll eventually start to recover in October, September, October with partial returns and they don't, they only expect office return to get back to seventy-five to eighty percent permanently, because there there's going to be a new model within offices, more spacing and more time off with the the shared remote learn, you know, working and and in the office. So the result is we're primarily business hotels. So the need for business travel and international travel, by the way, is over as well. So um weddings were over. Hopefully, now in the fall, they'll recover, but there have been no weddings. And then finally tourism and the private schools, for the first time, people are picking up their kids at school again. But um so, you know, it's always a small segment of our business, but that is recovering. Leisure travel is starting to recover. So we reopen the Simsbury Inn or we are reopening Monday for the first time, and we're going to keep it open through October. And then um we're actually going to reevaluate. I mean, we we have laid off over well over a hundred employees and um we're going to reevaluate come November, December, January, February, March, when there is no other traffic other than business and no one expects business to recover. So we may shut down the Simsbury Inn or the Avon Old Farms uh again because it was so much cheaper to close and only lose seventy-five thousand a month um paying the fixed costs um of like property taxes of eight thousand a month and and insurance of six thousand a month at Simsbury. These things go on. So so that's that's where we are from that end. Now, the Soma Grill, we closed our restaurants, of course, but the Soma Grill rents at the eighteen twenty house. And at best, they're capable of paying half their rent, but that hasn't been collectible. So from a rental standpoint, that's down to about half. And as you know, pretty much the River River View, North House, Country Clubs um are shut beginning to reopen. Um what else? The um we are not extended stay at all. The Residence Inn benefited from the concept of apartments within the hotels. Um, the the general value that we think we I I've talked to CBRE, one of the largest hotel appraisers and and also Cushman Wakefield, and that the consensus in the hotel world is that um that uh nationwide, it might be down twenty-seven percent in values for but that includes a lot of leisure hotels. They believe that business hotels pretty much are down about forty percent. And and the supporting facts of that are that they don't think business will recover till two thousand twenty-five. So they're saying four years uh that that the value of what the hotel was worth last year will not recover until four years from now. And you're going to run major losses until then. So the result is that in four years, your hotel might be worth what it was last in two thousand nineteen. And you discount that by a pretty high discount factor of maybe ten percent to get the true value today. There is no market really for hotels uh today. It's 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 really a desperation factor and and there is no market. Um, we did get a over a forty percent reduction in our Avon assessment for Avon Old Farms Hotel. Um, I'm a a partner in a city, a small hotel in New York City across the board. New York City pretty much reduced hotel values by forty-two percent. The Greater Hartford Hotel Market, as you know, is terrible. They 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 could not sell the Hilton at any price as a hotel. And um the Homewood Suites is now out of business in Hartford. It's turned into apartments. And the Farmington Marriott um has also been foreclosed and 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 um so it's operating under foreclosure. And if you look at rates um today at the Farmington Marriott, they're eighty-nine dollars. A year and a half ago, they were two hundred dollars or or two hundred and forty-nine dollars at the Farmington Marriott. Today, they're eighty-nine dollars. And the Residence Inn recently has gone up, but in Avon, that that had been down to a hundred and ten dollars, but now um it started to go up again, which is positive, but they have kitchenettes. And so um Connecticut, all hotels are suffering. Oh, they're gonna, they've told us a hundred, what is it, a hundred and eighty-nine? They the forecast for Connecticut hotel closures is massive, um which is a good thing if we can stay open, because they do forecast a large number of Connecticut hotels, a hundred and eighty-one are expected, predicted to close of the three hundred and eighty-nine hotels in Connecticut. And um and then uh what else? The um other um aspects, let's see, the pandemic, you know, the the whole question is about this permanent shift. And that'll occur. And we basically want to stay open. We didn't have large mortgages. We've um we are losing a massive amount. We'll have lost three million dollars um by this summer keeping the hotels as we have. Uh luckily, our bank has for forbearred on interest for six months across the board. The operational losses are massive and it's a loss to our community, because if we don't, if we're not open, which unfortunately we were not and we may not be again, um then um it harms the entire community. It's it's a wonderful asset. We employ hundreds of people. We provide services to the community and we really just sort of need, I'm not sure when your next reassessment is, but we really need help now for the next few couple of years um until we recover. And that's all I have to say. Um Jeff, can you think of anything?
And just to just to summarize, I know. I mean, can I ask a couple of questions quickly before I'm in um and a couple of knowledge acknowledgements, I guess, you know, those two hotels um really are only hotels minus, I guess, maybe the Iron Horse and maybe there's another one I'm not thinking of. Obviously, our our staples in the town and um, you know, we we would love to see you guys back open and and we understand, you know, what you're going through. What, if you could share, um you said that in Avon, you got a forty percent reduction on your assessment. Is that is that?
Correct. It was it was actually forty forty-two percent. Um, but let me frame for you how they did it, Sean, just so you know, is that they will review it. So they gave us a forty-two percent reduction now. And before and then for the reassessment, but then they will review at reassessment time and said, okay, we're basing this on your occupancy being twenty-five percent, which is half of what normally is uh or or even less than that. But we're going to review it and see if your occupancy goes up to forty percent, we're going to adjust your assessment accordingly. If it stays at twenty-five, we go down, we'll adjust it then. If it goes up to fifty percent, we'll adjust it up. And we agreed to that. We think that's a great model um for us, but around forty-two percent is what the what they gave us.
Okay, and yeah, and I ask because um, you know, we recognize that you're you're basically sitting on something that you can't use. Um, and and unfortunately, I I hate to hear that you have to, it's cheaper to shut down, you know? Even though with this reduction, you still may have to do that, like, you know, if we can make hopefully some some adjustments for you, you still may have to do that, just because that's the nature of the beast. So I think Jeffrey, feel feel free if you want to add anything more. I just wanted to get those questions out while.
Yeah, the only thing I had, Sean, was I'm sure you uh you you wrote the letter or read the letter that we wrote that basically down seventy-seven percent at at Simsbury Inn and seventy-three percent at um eighteen twenty. Those are unsustainable costs, obviously reductions that will never come back. It's gone. Um, and we we there's nothing worse than driving by our properties and seeing them closed. Simsbury has always treated us great. We've got a great relationship with the town. Main Street Partnership has always helped us, Chamber of Commerce and vice versa. And right now, quite frankly, we're we're trying to rebrand the property. Simsbury Properties for more of a leisure. We've dealt with um uh Main Street Partner and Chamber Commerce and they're going to the town to try and uh get people into the area. It's great to come to the Simsbury Inn, but what's at the Simsbury Inn? It's we've got to go to a Farmington Valley, Simsbury, come to the valley, do this, do that. And so it's it's quite an effort, too, that we've gotten rebranding. So luckily, we have the PPP money, all the partners that have put in money. And so basically, that's that's where we're at.
Um, Lori or Regina, do you guys have any questions?
I I really don't have any questions, but I'm I'm just so sorry that, you know, for what you all are going through and and your staff and and, you know, it it it's it's tough to hear, you know, twenty twenty-five is when the projections are out there that we'll be returned to some sort of normalcy. So but but thank you. I appreciate learning more about um what you have been dealing with. It was helpful.
Yeah, same. Thanks for for writing it all out. Um, it sounds like like tough times and hope you guys can get through it.
Yeah, uh I'll just close by, you know, um we we realized we don't have the board itself. Um, you guys are basically our only hotels, so this this is a new kind of workaround that we'll have to sit down with our with the staff and and hopefully we can find something that uh will be beneficial, because those those are staples in town, both of them have always been and you know, we want them to continue to be. So thank you for coming before us and uh we will deliberate and notify you in the mail. Uh, do you guys have any closing questions for us?
No, again, Simsbury has always been fair to us and we appreciate you taking a weekend. And I used to do this for Avon many years ago. I was on it. I know it's involved. There's different businesses and you got to try and wrap your arms around each one of them. Uh, so thank you for taking the time to do this. And thank you very much for hearing us.
Okay, guys, have a good weekend.
As well.
You too.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
So I'm thinking. Those are tough.
I'll be right back.
And and I didn't understand for the hotels that so much more of it was business travel versus leisure. So that was interesting, too.
I think, and we can wait till Sean comes back, but I think a a refresh for or or an education, I don't know if I ever really knew it, um Um, with how property like this is kind of baseline set up. So like, for example, you know, we're having a conversation about the property. It's a hotel. The the property is the business-making asset. But, you know, how how do we, how do we wrap in the the income part of this, which is obviously the the main part and and the main story?
What do you want to do next?
Freezing in my house.
It's gotten chilly here, too. Had my window open when we started out this morning.
Um, do we have, is our next person, um, what time are they?
Done, aren't we?
That's it.
Fifteen?
They they uh they dropped out. They would through their.
They did. Oh, okay.
Well, here to wrap up.
Do do we want, so then we're done with hearings?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Guys want to take a a five-minute breather?
Okay.
Or five, five, five good or ten better?
Ten better? I'm good. Just gonna grab a bite to eat.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, okay.
And then we'll have, and so then we've got three left. Well, we've got the property we just heard. I'll just count that as one. We've got four thirty-seven Bushy Hill, which is what we had started doing. Um, and then we've got the Cobtail, ten Cobtail, right? That is that your guys' list, too, and then the two that we have to close up from Monday.
Sweet.
That's it.
Okay.
So we we should be done with this pretty quickly. All right, see you back in uh ten minutes then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So um do we want to start on probably the the toughest one, which is going to be the hotels?
Okay.
So um Francine, I'm gonna defer to you a little bit. You know, I was trying to get that information on what Avon did because this is obviously, you know, new to us, um probably new to you, too, would be my guess on on how we go about, you know, um something that's fair and equitable, understanding that um it is a this I this I think is a little different than than office space. It is different, but you know, uh I'm just not quite sure what.
All right, so let me, yeah, so let me bring it back to the um what we talked about before, you know, of course, our last revaluation was twenty seventeen. So it is based on that, that market, um cost approach was looked at. Uh, one of them, the income approach was looked at at that point. Um, we are in a five-year evaluation cycle. Next revaluation is coming up in twenty-two. Um, and yes, this is definitely your, you know, um, we we cannot make any changes um based on market in between evaluations. So market going up, we cannot increase a property based on that increase. Market going down, we cannot make changes based on that. Um, that is why we have revaluations every five years. The state did make some executive actions based on this pandemic. And those executive actions that they took, the town did um take those into consideration and they did do. And what that was, was to um make some uh adjustments and extensions in paying tax bills and deferring uh any uh penalties. You know, if they went beyond that, reducing the um the um uh percentage, you know, for the uh uh penalties. Um, so that is what they took and did. Um, we were not given any executive action as to, and I was waiting to hear um if they were, you know, uh the thought did, you know, are they going to make, you know, for um this type, you know, of economic changes, um that is um above and beyond what we've ever seen in past. Um, however, they did not. Um, they do have the option of of going to the town and um requesting some type of other abatements. Um, you know, that is an option that perhaps um, you know, some towns will will look into. Um, however, just based on the loss of revenue from this, a- and I feel really bad. I I do hear them. Um, I cannot, and I don't think that that is the approach that we can take. So um Avon, yes, they mentioned Avon did something. I'm not sure you know, if it's the board who did that, how, you know, um the town of Farmington, on the other hand, uh took the option to not follow that. Um, they have several hotels. I'm not sure of some of the other towns, you know, what approaches they took. Um, but I'm, um, that's where my stand is. And that is the reason that I, you know, um did tell them that they had the option to go to the Board Assessment Appeals. Um, however, um I need to follow the statutes and um that was not something that I could do. And I'm not sure, you know, at this point, what the border, if the board can do anything. Um, but to refer them maybe to some abatement, you know, from the town.
I think it's pretty simple to say that there, the property is not worth what it was. So that would be in our purview to to make an adjustment.
But again, it's referring it back to our values again are based on the seventeen market. And even when residential properties, you know, there's a decline in the market, we cannot midstream revaluation, change the valuation of a property because the market is going down. And we cannot change the valuation on a property if the market is going up just based on that purpose. If there's no changes in the actual property itself, other than economic changes, we cannot do that. I I do feel really, you know, uh, it's it's hard. It really is.
So que- question. So we've got things like economic depreciation, physical depreciation. You know, my my understanding, and it may be wrong, is is those are things that if the conditions around the property change, they're they're specifically there to capture that the the price, the intrinsic price of the property is being affected by these other things. You know, I see economic depreciation seems to be uh in a a positive thirteen percent on the property right now. My, am I reading that part of it correctly? I'm looking at um the seven thirty-one item. Economic depreciation of the three ninety-seven is at seventy-two percent?
Okay, there again, that economic depreciation is reflective of that market also back in seventeen. The other property that um you did consider and make an adjustments for uh economic, you know, the um exterior obsolescence um had a property that back even in back in seventeen, okay, that property across the street, okay, we're referring to back in, it has been for several years. So looking at the seventeen market, it was as such, and that was a valid thing to do.
Because I know we've had businesses come before us and, you know, say that um, you know, this this their spaces aren't being used as much. I I I thought we had made adjustments with some business in the past and and what ways can we make adjustments for businesses when they come in front of us?
Yeah, so if if this was, you know, we just went through a revaluation and they're bringing this up, valid, 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 yes. Um, we're.
I I think uh.
So I, now it's up to the board to make a decision, you know, but um.
This is so, you know, this is tough because this is really, this isn't the first application that we're gonna get. I mean, obviously, this one, but I would assume that we're gonna get more come September and even more next year. Um, and probably the year after that, that are going to be similar, maybe not hotels, but businesses, you know?
September is motor vehicles only, though.
Okay, well, okay, so next year, probably even more soon next year. That, you know, are going to have these these issues based on uh the pandemic. And I think it's our job to acknowledge that and and uh, look, the downfall, if we don't do anything, the businesses are gonna close, right? They already are closing. So and and let's be honest, a hotel in Simsbury is not an attractive place, really, to visit.
Oh, I hear you, Sean. I really do. I really do. And that's why I could not, as the assessor, make that change. And um referred it back to you guys.
So we can make that change.
Say that again, Lori.
Uh, we can make that change is what I'm hearing, since it's being referred back to us.
But but that's what I, anything, any appeals need to go to the Board Assessment Appeals. You are still bound by following, you know, the guidelines also, the statutes.
Um, well, i- if they were to bring this to court, not that I want to have additional cost um for them, the court can provide relief and is not bound by the five-year uh revale period of time, correct? Or or not?
No, they would need to, it would need to be uh back to seventeen also. When we go to court on a property, even if it's after the revaluations, the um um sorry here, I'm getting a blank. The appraisals need to be based on the revale year. So that's why this is so hard at this point in time. And I do feel really, really bad about this. You know, what's the right thing to do? What's that?
All right, let me, let me jump in maybe from a slightly different angle. So just looking at the two cards we've got here, both of them similar types of properties in Simsbury based on the twenty seventeen year. There is a big difference. Going back to that, maybe it's just a a hearing day that I'm obsessed with the depreciation numbers. Why is one of the properties assessed at a seventy-two percent? Ho- I think positive, um economic depreciation, and then the other one is thirteen. That feels like one of them is, they're doing this, they're doing the same in the same area.
You're built.
The eighteen-twenty house is old.
That's based on the year built.
Yeah, right.
So it's still giving it a plus thirteen percent economic depreciation?
No, no, that's not an economic depreciation. That depreciation is based on the year built. It's a depreciation. So you, we always start off with, you know, cost of replacement new. And then based on the year built and the condition of the establishment, an adjustment is then made. A depreciation is then made, and that's what you're seeing.
So a higher number is having more depreciation?
Yes.
So that, I think that's the opposite.
Let me pull, let me pull up the property card. Hold on. Which one are you looking at?
I've got both of them pulled up, but seven thirty-one Hot Meadow, which is the eighteen-twenty, has an economic depreciation number of thirteen. So based on, it's from eighteen-twenty-two, um, I guess I would have expected it to be zero or negative. Um, and in either case, the other property, three ninety-seven, is a positive seventy-two, which, okay, but it, everything there was built in nineteen eighty-seven. That's not quite new condition. So both of those numbers by themselves seem high for the property, and certainly compared to the two of them don't don't seem consistent.
So three ninety-seven, you're looking at.
Consider the physical depreciation for the building value, just when you're looking at the year built.
Pull that up here.
And I I, this literally may be me confusing positives or negatives, but I I see like for the grade factor on seven thirty-one, I see a minus number. So the the numbers here, the positive thirteen and the minus ten.
Oh, that, that one, okay, no, um, actually, and let me go to the actual system here for that one, seven thirty-one. All right, so seven thirty-one is on a cost approach, okay? Is what um it was valued as for seventeen revaluation. They use the cost approach for that property. The other property. So some of those adjustments, you know, um, were not necessarily. Bear with me here.
Just one second.
Actually, they both, yep, no, they um they were both on the uh cost approach. Is what they were valued at. They weren't valued uh on the income approach, neither one.
And we switch, we can't switch to valuing them on an e- income approach right now?
No, you're changing the um, yeah, the valuation on it.
Because if we went back and did the twenty seventeen with an income approach, can we do that and then bring it forward to now? Because it's their income that's impacted and then.
Exactly, but you're ma- you're changing a value based on seventeen's revaluation. You're changing the valuation um from one approach to the other midstream.
And there's no kind of act of God component of this, or, you know, there there's, there's no other creative way to do this with how.
See, and that one, and the three ninety-seven. Three ninety-seven Hot Meadow already had an external obsolescence of seventy-two percent. There was a big external obsolescence placed on that one.
I I I'm confused on why an uptown is doing something.
I. I mean. Value and um, yeah, the thirteen physical depreciation for the seven thirty-one, which is the eighteen-twenty house, um, had a greater physical deterioration based on the year bill and all that, and had a thirteen percent external obsolescence.
So I w- I would think
So.
the economic depreci- the economic obsolescence of these two properties would be, certainly the one that was older, I would expect would be aligned with the seventy-two percent we see on the other one. They're the same type of property, functionally, they're near the thing, same thing. If one of them was seventy-two percent in twenty seventeen, I can't imagine the other one has a basis to be so different.
They're pretty different properties, keep in mind. Talking about an old structure, historical structure versus a new build. Some of that comes into play with some of those figures in consideration.
But just ec- from an economic use perspective, both hotels. I think that's why, why, that's why that one feels like they should be, they should be better aligned. What do, if if just.
Hmm.
Regina, your question made the difference between seventy-two percent economic factor on.
Well, it's external. It's not an economic. It's an external obsolescence.
And and that was what I was going to, yeah, on our card, we're seeing it as external. On the property card that's printed, that the members of the board are seeing. On the property card that's printed that the members of the board are seeing, it's referred to as economical.
Ah, all right. And I can't.
Thank you for catching that. That would have continued.
I can't, I can't, you know, um. Hopefully, I, I was not, you know, part of that revaluation. Typically, an external obsolescence takes into consideration, you know, um, the surroundings too, you know, the placement of. And, and looking at a, um, this property, for instance. Would take a look at, um, the surroundings, you know, what's, what's impacting the valuation of that building? They did take a look at the income approach on that property. They chose to take the. Cost approach. You know, the income approach in twenty-seventeen for the three ninety-seven Hot Meadow Street would put it closer to like two point. Uh, two million nine fifty, as opposed to just over three million. Um, they chose to take the cost approach in this case and, um, downgrade it with a seventy-two percent external obsolescence.
I mean, if we go to just our standard overall condition, you know, can we make changes there? I mean, I just think. The numbers are so far apart.
And, and don't get me wrong, external obsolescence does take into consideration different things that affect valuation, okay? So, um, just for instance, if you had a building, you know. Adjacent to a landfill for, you know, that's an external obsolescence, you know, that. Property will be definitely affected by what's, you know, next to it. So in this case here, we're looking at a hotel, the placement of that hotel. Just trying to bring myself, um, to the actual location. Is it, was it easier? Accessible or harder to access that property where it is? Um, that's the reason that, you know, um, it's got a greater external obsolescence on it.
Well, again, is, is it harder to access now because? Or it has been for some time, just because people physically, you know, we've, we're quarantined. I mean, can we get creative in that way? And if we are able to, would that provide us? A significant amount of relief?
Well, I mean, we're, we're also assuming that our twenty-seventeen numbers were good, which maybe they weren't. So. Okay.
Is there any other business in town that's a hotel?
At this point, I think, I think, um. We're spinning in circles, so. I'm not sure what the best, the best idea is. Um, I'm going to make a motion. If you guys choose to second it and vote on it, then we can do that. And if the vote goes either way, then. We'll let them appeal it to the higher court.
There you go.
If you guys are good with that, I would make a motion on unique ID three one eight four six six zero zero. To set the market value at six hundred thousand.
Um, this is, sorry, unique ID. Oh, seven thirty-one, sorry. Okay. And. So if you could go ahead and repeat that, so unique ID three one eight four six six zero zero.
Yep. Set the market value at six hundred thousand.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, so that's the market value, six hundred thousand?
Yep.
So it's going from, okay, so the eight eighty-three nine ninety-seven to six hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um. On, uh. Sorry, uh, unique ID three one eight four six eight zero zero, which is the three ninety-seven Hot Meadow. I would set the market value at two million.
I'm happy to second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Just want to make sure I've got my notes. Okay, here. So. All right, I'm, I'm good.
All right, um. Bushy Hill.
Bushy Hill. And where we last left off, we had established that correcting the number of bedrooms did nothing. Changing the condition from average good to average had about a five K impact on the market value. I think that's as far as we got. Was there bathrooms discrepancy?
I don't remember them sharing that. And so.
Two seventy-two does seem low. Three forty-eight does seem high.
Yeah, that's about right. Yeah.
So do you, do you want to meet somewhere in the middle there, guys? I'm open for, uh, suggestions.
Yes, that.
I don't think, I don't think it should be under three.
Hundred percent agreed.
You agree?
I, I, even when I was buying in like twenty sixteen, I wasn't seeing something with three and a half baths go for lower than three twenty.
Yeah. I mean, it does need probably, you know, needs a kitchen, which you're looking at sixty grand probably. So.
But it's you, you know, it's inhabitable and it's big.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, my first, my first pin would be three twenty.
I could work with that. I took off because he mentioned five percent at one point. Did anybody else hear that? I don't know.
Yeah.
I did, but I, I ignore those, Lori. I'm not, I don't, I don't round myself in suggestions.
That's actually, comes in at three thirty. So a little higher. Because, um, five percent, and I, I'd have to review my math, but five percent on three forty-eight, four nine nine, I came out at seventeen. Let me do three, four, eight, four, nine, nine. Yeah, I came as like seventeen-five, and so minus three forty, three forty-eight minus seventeen-five comes in at three thirty-one. So, I think I'm a little higher, but. I'm not, you know, the three twenty, I'm not opposed to either because the home does need work.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy there. Um, unique ID three oh three oh six four zero zero. Um, set the market value at three hundred and twenty thousand. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm, I'm just teasing you, Lori. I know we go back and forth with how much we.
Well, usually, you know, I've been the bleeding heart liberal in the past, but getting tougher these days. For five years of doing this and it's like, sorry.
And your chickens are getting eaten out of your neighborhood.
Exactly.
Your spinal.
I'm cranky. Um, okay, so that was number three. Okay, so then we're looking at.
Cobtail.
Cobtail.
Which is probably straightforward. I just have to pull up my calculator.
Cobtail, poor cobtail. Still hemorrhaging money up there.
I, I don't remember, um. If there was a specific amount we were using on other homes on Cobtail. I know we've had a number of people come in and talk to us, but I don't remember what our approach was.
It was like about two hundred and ten, something like that.
Because the other thing is the other comps that were shared here, um, are they a better reflection? Of the home we're discussing than the ones that were shared? By the, um, homeowner.
I'm using living square footage of eleven versus ten Cobtail. They're both colonial. You know, a- all the comps are larger physical houses, but eleven was pretty close. Um, so when I turn that living, I get like a hundred and twenty-one dollars a square foot on living area, which turns the. And I'm, I'm assuming, although I haven't looked, that the, the lot size is about the same, so that there doesn't need to be an adjustment for that. Um, and that gets the eight sixty-seven number down to seven ninety-five.
I like that.
Ooh, but they, they only were asking for eight fifteen.
That's correct.
So they had their appellate, uh, appellant's estimate was eight fifteen. So I don't know if you want to go lower than that, or if you're all comfortable with that number.
I'm comfortable with the eight fifteen number based on that. And I also think it could go lower.
I think, I think doing it by your square footage number makes sense.
I like it that way.
What was that, seven ninety-five?
Seven ninety-five.
Okay, um, unique ID three oh eight nine nine five four oh. Set the market value at seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and seven ninety-five?
Yes.
All right. I, I hate us not being unanimous. I, I would have kept to that, what they asked for, but I'll do, I'll, I'll.
You can dissent.
A, a nay for the first time.
Wrong with a little dissension. Healthy.
But it still passes. Okay, all right, so that's good. And then we are on to.
The ones from earlier in the week?
Yeah.
Can we revisit? Uh, there's one from today that, uh, I don't have a final. Change or it needs clarification. That would be sixteen Masako.
I think we did no adjustment on that one, right? That's with the, the multifamily?
To take no action.
Okay, to leave it as what the, we had for twenty twenty.
Yeah, after that.
I, I, I thought we were going with the slight adjustment. There was a slight.
Correct. There is no correction.
And that's why we were potentially holding off for a moment there on voting on it because there's like a four thousand dollar difference or something.
Yeah, no, I reviewed that with Jennifer and there shouldn't have been an adjustment there.
There should not have been.
So that one. Let me get back to that.
So the three seventy-four was the number.
Three seventy-four, am I, can you hear me? Three seventy-four was an erroneous number.
Right, so we're good, right?
We're, we're, the value was three seventy-nine, seven thirty-three as it stood on the twenty twenty grand list. Not the three seventy-four. Some of the information that I had sent you contained an error.
So.
Do we, do we have to do something or no?
I don't know. Can, um, so we voted to take no action. And so I guess we want to just clarify what that.
So I, I think we voted no action because there was nothing that we saw as the board that warranted a change.
Okay.
And it looked like there was a, an item that had been corrected, meaning again, did not need our involvement. So I think what we're hearing is that there was nothing that needed correcting. But unless we've changed from our initial assessment that there was nothing for us to change as a board, I think we're still good on no action.
I just wanted to clarify that we were all on board because I did not write that down. And going back and forth with what Jennifer had included in the packet. So I just wanted to clarify. So the assessment remains as what was on for twenty twenty. Perfect. All right, thank you.
And then we have our two appeals that were tabled from Monday.
That was, uh.
Oh, and we have to remember to do the agenda, the, um, the minutes from.
Yeah.
Last week, early this week.
What was the, and the one was the Oshkosh?
And then the red.
Freightliner, right?
Yeah.
I'm looking for the paperwork here.
I did, I think hopefully all got the additional information from Mr. Vincent. There is one piece that he did not include that we requested.
Yep.
Which was the actual invoice. On the vehicle.
All right, so, um.
Do we want to do first?
I've got the Vincent.
The Oshkosh, Oshkosh.
Yeah.
Looking for the. Email. I think it was like. Vincent, that one. Does anybody have the email of the appraisal? I'm looking for it right now. I can't find it.
I don't know if it's a full-on appraisal or, or it's the. It's a full-on appraisal or it's the. Oh, maybe this is it? Nope.
The, the emails one Vincent additional info dash BAA dash Oshkosh trailer. Was sent Thursday at 2:12 PM. I, I can pull it up here. I can screen share here if that's easier.
Okay.
She's getting techie on us. I'm here for.
Just pull that.
Got it.
You got it? All right.
Okay, so they're saying. 5,000.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep. Is it just the email from Gabrielle Truck Sales saying 5,000? That's the appraisal?
That is one of them. And then there is a statement from. Freightliner of Hartford, Inc.
All right, 45.
Oh. Okay, a 4,500. Is that what you just said, Sean?
What's that?
That, the, that one's 4,500, Freightliner. Okay.
Why would it just go right in the middle of the two?
Yeah, because that's the price that they'll buy it. That's not the price he would pay to go buy it himself. It's probably the in-between.
Yeah. Okay. All right, let's see here. Unique ID 69246. Set the market value at 4750. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And for notes, the minutes purposes, I should be adding these two from Monday onto the Saturday minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They should be, they're deliberated on Saturday.
Okay.
All right, so. Last but most certainly not least is the. Red Door Homes, right?
Yep.
Did, now, let's see what.
You should have received additional information on that as well.
Yep.
Thursday at 9:12. Did he, did he find the, the tax paperwork?
You want to?
I'm scrolling, I'm scrolling to see.
Explain what was received, Francine, or?
Are you looking at the packet? Let me pull up my packet.
Yes.
Okay, yep.
What was provided to you? Our copies of what was the same request that we made and that Francine made to Mr. Ricky? To provide, and this is what he provided to her. Based her evaluation on.
So page 15 in this packet. Looks like.
If you're scrolling, can you tell us which page that is? Because we have hard copies that have different numbers on them.
Yeah, I didn't open mine up yet. When was this sent again now, Jennifer?
Thursday. I don't have the time.
Here, I can screen share. Maybe I can. Can I screen share?
You should be able.
It's going to be hard to see though from my, I do have the packet. I just need to.
I am not finding it.
It should be along the bottom. You don't have that option?
I don't.
Let me. Let me see if I make you the host if now you have that option.
I can. Are you seeing it?
Yes.
Can you guys see that?
Yes. I guess I didn't finish printing out the pages. Ran out of paper because I was printing it out.
Just scrolling through now is just. I had downloaded from the Department of Motor Vehicle. And trying to understand the type of vehicle from the inspection. They called it a composite. So that's why I downloaded that and doing my research and calling around. If, if we had had the application on file, would it have been eligible?
Okay, so the, this is the same, nothing new was sent by him?
No, this is all the information. Page three of 17, this is all the, these are all pages that he sent that Regina's scrolling through now. That, right here, this page right now that you're looking at is what he provided to me since I could not find an on-file. The actual application. So I asked him to provide us with a copy of what, you know, he had submitted to us, and this is what he gave us. So date registered shows up as 31417. That's why I highlighted that. And if you go towards the bottom of the page a little bit more again, and the date sign was 31516. There's no stamp on it. He said we didn't really make a copy of it. Originally. The prior email, he had no copy of what he had filed. So it's up to the board to review the documentation that he provided to us back in December and make a determination.
Can I, you're saying that on this document, the property tax exemption application, it says 2017 on it somewhere, although it's signed.
If you scroll, yeah, if you scroll back a little bit, right there, 34, no, go back. The first on the right, on the left, 31417 is the date that it's showing as being registered. However, it was signed 31516. This is documentation that he provided to us in December. Since we could not find on-file. The actual application. I asked him to provide me with a copy of whatever he had.
We, we do have some proof though that the vehicle was purchased in 16, in 2016.
Oh, yes, there's no doubt. However, there, that vehicle does not appear on our grand list. You know, prior to 18, 18, we just added because Bloomfield then finally sent it back to us. So we added it to the 18, just this past year, and the 19 as well. Prior to that, that vehicle, if there's an exemption on a vehicle, in this case here, it would be on the grand list. And the exemption would then, you know, reduce the value to zero, whatever the exemption is. It's not on our grand list. We don't have any documentation. Again. I can't answer to that since I was not there prior to that. However, we did a lot of research. We couldn't find anything. So based on his statement, I asked him to provide to us any documentation that he had. You know. And this is what we got.
Okay, so.
As the assessor, I couldn't give the exemption because we did not have, you know, an application on file that would have been recorded on time. So I deferred him to the Board of Assessment Appeals.
No, I think, I mean, it must have obviously been done because there's no way that it would have just not been on the list, right? So.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Even if there was an exemption given, you know, exempting it all because it was supposed to, let's say that, you know, these vehicles, you know, they're approved for exemption. They, they do appear on the grand list. They would appear on the grand list, but with a zero value because it would, you would see the assessment and then you would see an exemption being provided. Okay? We do not have anything. Why? I don't know. I can't answer that. We have nothing. Okay?
I guess my, my.
There was a question while we were hearing the assessment the first time about. You know, the guy said there was some confusion because he bought it new, but then on some piece of paper, it was erroneously listed as, as used. I guess my question is, in your research, assuming that this exemption was put in, was filed appropriately, does this vehicle qualify for this exemption, the best we can tell?
Right, and that's the research that I did in case we did come up with the actual paperwork. And I found no, based on the research and then even going out and asking some of the other assessors that deal with a lot of these types of vehicles, you know, heavy, these exemptions. And with all the information I was given, this type would not have qualified. And that's why I downloaded all the other stuff. And if you look at the inspection report, it is first classified, that's the title. That's the, all right, keep going. That, and if you look at the invoice, of course, you know, at least, you know, what the vehicle is, new, new there, however, just keep going. Okay, keep going to the, okay, DMV, this part here, first of all. The rear axle is a 99. Engineer 2015, but that could be, you know, again, so that's one item that we would look at because looking at the statute as how it qualifies. Now, if you scroll over to the inspection report from the DMV. Okay, right here, this inspection. It's the type of inspection, it's listed as a composite at the top of that form. Composite, and what's a composite? A composite is. And that's why I downloaded the, the rest. So I'm going to leave it up to you guys to make a determination. Based on the information, okay?
I don't think that there's, you know, based on his testimony, you know, I don't, I don't think that he would have, he would have bought it if he wasn't going to get this exemption. So I know he has said that he's not.
Yeah, there was a federal exemption that I was told that I was not aware of, that one of the other assessors mentioned to me for these types of vehicles was a federal tax incentive. That's not what we're dealing with here. This exemption is not a federal tax exemption. It's different. Okay, so there was a federal tax exemption. This is a state property tax exemption.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's state property tax exemption for this, for heavy equipment vehicles. And there are guidelines that we have to follow.
So I'm still confused because he has not paid any state tax because it didn't end up on any grand list, either Bloomfield or here.
And that, and that's what's like, I, you know, again, we, we looked and looked. And, and yeah, I, I don't know.
I imagine he was thinking he was getting a bill because he thinks, he thought he had the exemption.
Yeah, is it one of those items that we had issues with DMV in the past? That did not, you know, that there, there is a type of vehicle that we had several issues with a lot of towns with DMV that they just kind of like disappeared. Is this this case? Perhaps it is. I don't know. But that's the only thing that I could come up with, that why it doesn't show up anywhere. And that he, and that he thought that he was getting the exemption, which is, you know, a valid thing because I would, you know, if I was in his shoes, that's what I would think. I'm not getting a tax bill, so, you know, I got the exemption. But, yeah, so again.
I'm inclined to to accept the exemption. When does it expire? I guess that's what we need to figure out. What years is, is?
19, 19 would have been the last one.
What's that?
19, 2019 would have been the last year that he would get the exemption. It's a five-year exemption program. So the first one would have been for the supplemental, the 15, 15 supple. And then the 16 regular, 17, 18, and 19 regular. So he's appealing the 19 grand list. The 18, we did not get any appeals for the 18, no application.
And, and it looks like he's not asking for exemption in 2019, just that we adjust the value of the vehicle.
I read it as he was asking for the exemption.
Okay.
That was, that was, and maybe he's, you know, there's a language difference since he's not doing this yearly like we are. But I, I think I'm, I'm inclined to, I think I share where Sean's coming from. I don't know why two towns forgot this, but I feel like if the guy was told the first year he bought this thing, hey, you don't, you don't actually qualify for this, you know, that's his opportunity as a taxpayer to make a different decision with the thing he just bought. I feel like jumping in here, you know, and it's too bad he didn't appeal all the years that he could have, but the, the year that he appealed, I think we should, we should act like the like it was in place and then, you know, let that expire, you know, and go in forward. It'll be, it'll be just a regular piece of property.
Um, but I, is, was he eligible for the exemption in 2019? I, I agree with acting as if the exemption paperwork had gone through. Um, when does that expire?
Sounds like 2019 is what.
19 would be the last year, would have been the last year for the exemption.
Can we just do this as? It would be, the motion would be as this vehicle is exempt pursuant to whatever for 29 fiscal year, grand list as of October 2019, right? Did I stuttered that all the way through? Motion is, this vehicle is exempt from 2019 grand list. Right?
You're asking one of us?
Aye, yes.
Sean? Yeah, that's, that's what he's appealing is to have this exempt.
Got it. All right, so Unique ID 65497. Motion is to exempt this vehicle from the 2019 grand list. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then minutes.
You do need to acknowledge the withdrawal on the final.
Roger.
That it was withdrawn.
This is Inton Bickford?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, Lori's gone.
I'm grabbing, sorry, I'm grabbing my, I'm keeping the papers spread out over the floor here. Okay. So. I'll add that.
Okay, so Unique ID 30566. I'm sorry, 30568800. Take no action. Because they did, they canceled their request. Second that, I guess. Lori?
I'll second that.
And we'll wait, I guess, for Regina to pop back in. There she is.
All right.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, so the final thing we have to do is the minutes. And we had a couple of corrections we have to make, right?
Francine was checking it for something.
Okay, let me, I'm gonna pull up.
Besides correcting my name throughout?
That I did.
That's been done.
I made the corrections that Jennifer forwarded. But I don't know.
Can I ask about, um, Keller, the twenty nineteen motor vehicle supple, a clarification on there so we know what to do?
And the nineteen supplemental?
Yes, this is for a motor vehicle from the twenty nineteen Ford Flex.
And what was the question?
Question to clarify is, uh, the motion was to adjust the market value to twenty-nine six seventy-five for a total assessed value. Uh, then it talks from December to Sep- to September of seventeen three oh four. So.
Okay.
Is that a, is that, did you include like a pro rate in there? Because we should just take the, the full. Assessment and then when, in our system, we do the pro rate, so.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just wondering, just, just so we want to make sure that we have the right, you know, valuation. So is the seventeen three oh four? The, let me just do, uh.
I, that, that just needs to be deleted out and let the, let the thing automatically prorate the number?
Yeah, so I'm not, that's why I'm just looking at. So the market value of twenty-nine six seventy-five, that is like the full market value that you guys decided on?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then that would be an assessment of twelve, twenty thousand seven seventy?
Total assessed value of, I'm sorry, could you give me that number again?
Twenty thousand seven seventy?
Okay. And then you'll adjust it for that.
So we, yes, so then because it's partial, you know, year. Uh, then we would make that adjustment in the system. I just wanted to clarify the actual value, market value without any. Um, timeframe adjustment. Was that your? Your vote?
Mm-hmm.
I think John suggested what, um, removing the, or ownership from December seventh, December, December, to remove that portion of the sentence.
I'm so, I've got it stating now to adjust market value to twenty-nine six seventy-five for a total assessed value of twenty-seven seven zero period. And then motion seconded by Regina and passed unanimously.
All right, so then, yeah, so then Jennifer, we would then, you know, prorate for whatever time period they had it.
Yep.
That assessment, okay. Good, thank you.
Everything.
Need to vote that?
Need to approve these minutes, I'm thinking.
Gotcha, okay, and you're making, you've made that change there?
Mm-hmm, I just made the change and I'll, I'll send it out to everybody when I pass them on to Francine and Jennifer.
Okay. Any other clarifications?
Scrolling through real quickly.
Okay, sorry.
All right, I don't see anything else at this point, so, thank you. Thank you for clarifying all that.
I will make an emotion to approve the minutes as amended. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Cool, and then, um, I think. We are done. Um. Lori, can you CC me on that email so that I can go through and make sure I have all the right numbers and everything on all the packets so that I can get them back to, uh, Jennifer and Francine?
That sounds good. I'm gonna try to get to it tonight, but it, okay. Um, I know we want it quick, as quick as possible, just to wrap things up. So, okay, sounds good. And I'll fill your name correctly.
All right, guys, enjoy the rest of your weekend.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you all. Thank you all for, for all your.
Thank you.
Volunteering.
Thank you. A lot of luck working. Thanks, bye. Enjoy the rest of the weekend.